Okay. Oh, there you are. Okay, welcome to the September 20th, 2016 meeting of the Sammamish City Council. The council will be called to order. Looks like we have roll call after executive session. Does that make sense?
We can do it now.
We'll do roll call right now.
Mayor Don Jarand.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Ramir Vadurama.
Present.
Councilmember Tom Hornish.
Present.
Councilmember Kathy Huckabee.
Present.
Councilmember Bob Keller.
Here.
Councilmember Kristi Malchoy.
Present.
Councilmember Tom Odell.
And Tom Odell is excused, but he will be calling in?
Yes, he'll be in the executive session.
In the executive session.
They dialed him up already.
Okay. Next on the agenda is executive session, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I'd like to ask our city attorney, Mike Kenyon, to give us a brief overview of how executive session works, what's included, and just briefly describe the situation.
Okay.
Counsel, and I will be brief, but I know there have been some comments on social media and otherwise about the proper purpose of an executive session. Tonight's executive session is for the purpose of discussing potential litigation on a number of matters. So I think it's important for the public to know that the executive session exemption to the Open Public Meetings Act means that the council is entitled to go behind closed doors and have certain discussions. In an executive session, the council cannot take a final vote or reach a final decision. But with respect to potential litigation, the exemption that we're using tonight, the legislature in 2001 expanded the definition of potential litigation to allow you to discuss in executive session an actual threat of litigation, a reasonable expectation of litigation, or just to discuss the legal risks of a proposed action that we have identified when public discussion of that may lead to adverse legal or financial consequences. So I just want to make sure that the council and the public knows there is some breadth to the permissible scope of what we can discuss in there. Now, that's the next step, the discussion. The executive session exemption for potential litigation says that council can discuss with legal counsel representing the agency, the pros and cons of this litigation. In that discussion, you are free to offer your opinions as to the pros and cons of the litigation or course of action. The Supreme Court has made that clear in Miller versus Tacoma and other cases. So we can discuss the litigation, we can discuss the proposed course of action, you are free to give your specific opinions. It may be that in giving those opinions, a course of action becomes clear. Let me use an example that I frequently use when I make presentations on this, and that is if the question being discussed is whether or not to settle a particular piece of litigation, it may be that two council members offer their opinion that that piece of litigation should in fact be settled, and five others may say, under no circumstances should this be settled. That's not a vote, but even though that course of action has become clear, even the Attorney General's manual on open public government says that's legitimate executive discussion. Then you have to come back out here and take a vote, up or down, on whether or not to settle that litigation. So I hope that helps. I just want to make clear that you've got some breadth in what you can discuss, you're free to offer your opinions, we cannot vote or make a final decision in executive session. That'll happen out here after the executive session.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mike. So we'll be going into executive session for potential litigation pursuant to RCW 4230-1101I and potential land acquisition pursuant to RCW 4230-1101B. And we expect to be out and resume open session at 6:30. Half of work before we get to item 15, which is a discussion of development moratorium, and then under the city's managers' report, we'll have an update on the Mars Hill Church. This is being televised on Channel 21, and you can also, it'll be streaming on the website. So after public comment, if you don't want to sit around in these comfortable chairs, you can go home and watch it on TV if you like. So that's sort of the schedule tonight. And Councilmember Tom Odell is...where is he?
Chicago.
Chicago. He's in Chicago, but he's on the phone, so he'll be participating in the council meeting tonight. Okay, we have a scout troop here. Which troop is this?
Troop 695.
Troop 695, and are you going to lead us in the Pledge of Legions tonight?
It's touch and go. Would they like to do the flag ceremony?
Okay, why don't you fellows come up here and then lead us in the Pledge of Legions? How's that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any changes to the agenda that anybody wants to make at this point? Nope. Then all in favor of the approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved. Next, our presentation is proclamations, and we have a recognition to Chief Nate Elidge, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nate, would you like to stand, please, with your family? Okay. I don't get to do that very much longer for you, but thank you. I'd like to actually begin by saying that one of the best things about being with the city is that all of us on the staff get to work with good people. People who are smart, people who care, and people who want to make a difference in the community. Unfortunately, good people are in high demand, so we lose one every once in a while, and that's what we're experiencing tonight. After seven great years as our police chief, Nate Elidge is moving on. He's standing there before us, and I'd like to introduce his wife, Joanne. Joanne, would you stand or wave? Thank you. And his son Shane. Shane? Go ahead, stand up. Thank you all for coming. Since we've heard the news, I've consoled myself by noting that Nate's not leaving us for another city, just another job. In his next incarnation, you can refer to Nate as Chief of the King County Airport Firefighter and Police Unit. That pretty much makes him King of Boeing Field. Congratulations, Nate. Chief will be Captain Michelle Bennett. We've selected her from several very capable and competent candidates provided by the King County Sheriff's Office. She's also, I think, going to be terrific, and we look forward to welcoming her on October 1st, and we'll be introducing her to the council at the first meeting in October. At this point, I'm obligated to say some nice things about Nate. Of course I will. But it's not out of sense of obligation, Nate is a great guy. As the head of our police department, he's done a fantastic job of combining a professional approach with a personal touch. He's articulate, reasonable, friendly, just the kind of guy you'd want to run into, whether you're in trouble or just wandering around City Hall. Nate, we're going to miss you. You've been great to work with, and thank you for the seven great years of service that you've given to citizens of Sammamish. Thank you.
I might point out that we're the safest city in the state, thanks to Nate, right? And the crew.
That's a nice plaque.
Thank you, Nate. Okay, well, we're going to be safe in the interim, don't worry about it. Next is student liaison reports. Do we have a student from one of the high schools that wants to report? Nope. I guess they're busy studying tonight. So next is public comment, and this is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Three-minute limit per person or five minutes if representing the official position of a recognized community organization. If you'd like to show a video or PowerPoint, it must be submitted or emailed by 5:00 PM the end of business day to the city clerk. Melanie Anderson, manderson@samamish.us. Please be aware that council meetings are videotaped and available to the public. So when you come up, please state your name and your address. And we have quite a few people tonight. So we'll start with Clifford Hopper, followed by Liz Lindquist. And the speaker, right up here, thanks.
Thank you, Clifford Hops. I've been a resident of Sammamish for 34 years. I am probably uniquely impacted by the town center development. I am the only resident that directly is adjacent to it right now. I've had a change of climate, I've had a loss of electricity, water. Every plant I've planted for 34 years has died. Things really change with the development. But I've been here 34 years, and in that 34 years, I've seen Sammamish grow from one market, Sadler's Market, two schools, to what we have today. And development is needed. It also...you know, we have a lot of growth right now, we have a lot of traffic problems, and I heard that we have people talking about a moratorium on the town center, and I thought, wow, we should have a moratorium on everything but the town center. That project has been going on for years, probably more years than a lot of people that object to the town center development have been here. We've all been through the meetings. I rode the buses to Redmond when we developed a plan for this whole thing. I sit on a half acre, so I've gone through seven developers who've all been turned down by the city. And I'm still all for it. I mean, this is going to happen. It is what it is. But the thing is, if we don't allow developers to come here and give us an infrastructure, we won't have an infrastructure. We'll have the same thing that we've always had, which is we shop down below and give the city of Issaquah and Redmond all our business, all our tax revenues. We should be shopping here on the plateau, we should be supporting the plateau, we should be supporting the small businesses. So I just want to say, as somebody who's uniquely involved in the town center development, and believe me, it's not a money thing, because there's no money to be made. If you've checked the prices of houses that you have to move to, you're not going to make anything on the move. But we need it for the infrastructure, we need it to support the community, and maybe we should have a moratorium on every project that isn't connected to the town center. Thank you very much.
Liz Lindquist, followed by Charles Scott.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I firstly would like to thank you for allotting this time slot and an opportunity for community citizens to have a voice and express their opinions. My husband and I purchased our 1.17 acre property at 22622 Southeast 20th Street in 2002. We clearly understood the value of our R4 zoning and counted on that property designation to play a significant role in our retirement plan. We are not wealthy people, and like the majority of Americans, have our equity in our home. This equity represents what we are counting on to provide us for the rest of our lives. We have been reliable, responsible taxpayers and stewards of our property. I'm a member of the oldest garden club in Sammamish, and I'm also a master gardener. We believe in green. We have watched the city grow and have been supporters of that growth. However, in recent years, we have also watched big developers radically change the footprint of our city. We are not one of those big developers. We are on the brink of retirement, working on finding a small developer to put two or three lots on our acre. We currently have a signed agreement with a small developer to do just that. We spent money and hired an engineer who drew up a plot plan for our property, and on our behalf, had a pre-application meeting with the city planners. This alone took several months to arrange. Now we hear that the city is considering a moratorium on all further development. Just that rumor has already hurt us, as our potential buyer canceled an $8,000 land survey just at the end of last week. We really do not know what to do next. Please, I implore you, do not let our situation become collateral damage in a fight against big development. Finally, what we are asking tonight is, in the event that you decide to impose some freeze on development, you consider the fact that individual homeowners and taxpayers like my husband and I will be severely hurt by your actions. There must be exemptions or waivers to people like us who've already gone down this road, started the process many, many months ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Charles Scott, followed by Tim Farrelly.
Thank you, Counsel, for letting us speak today. My quick thing, I'm in Klahani, y'all guys just acquired us here just recently, and we do appreciate that. What I'd like to address today, though, is...
What is your address, then?
Oh, 3638 248 Place Southeast, Issaquah. Well, I guess it's in Amish, but they tell us, Issaquah, Washington, 98029. And what I'd like to address is RV parking on residential streets for...as of right now, we've got about...this is one that stayed for about four and a half months now. And we'd like to have some type of change in the city ordinance or whatever. Right now, it's for every 25 hours, they have to move just a few inches or a few feet, go around the block and park again. If it's on private property, our homeowners association can deal with their laws, but if it's on city streets, nothing can be done technically. We can call the police, have done that, they mark it, they move it, they come right back. And it's starting to get a little bit worse every year. A couple of years back, we had a homeowner who had a limousine business, and we went through this, but it was on the other side, and I didn't know about it, and some homeowner got finally frustrated enough that they took care of the situation with a brick. And we don't want that happening again. So what we'd like to see is something like, if you're going to park an RV between the hours, or a large vehicle, I'll give you the signatures, we got over 100 within half a day. And like 6:00 in the morning till 9:00 in the evening, you can park, but if you want to park overnight, you would have to come and get a permit for like $10 a night, so people won't keep using the streets as their personal RV storage. And I'll hand this down through, y'all, if you want to see it and the names and so forth be collected. And we would really like to address this, because it's only going to get worse. I even brought other neighbors with me today who just, you know, it's not exactly what you want to see every day.
Thank you, Charles. Mr. City Manager, would you put it on the work schedule?
We will look at that, yes.
Good. Okay, thank you for coming. Next is Tim, followed by Jason Donners.
Hi, my name is Tim Farrelly. I live at 3630 248th Place Southeast, and I guess it's now Sammamish. I'd like to speak to the enforcement aspect of that ordinance that Charlie was talking about. Enforcement should have a deterrent effect. Ticket and tow within 72 hours, or because a ticket or an infraction is not enough deterrent to stop parking of motorhomes, boats, jet skis, trailers in a residential area or on residential streets. Number two, the owners of motorhomes, boats, jet skis, trailers should be responsible to provide their own storage solutions and not be allowed to park or store them on residential streets. And I guess the hammer would be, the owners of those motorhomes, boats, jet skis, and trailers can pay for their own storage of the above items, or pay for the ticket, the towing, and the stores' charges at the vehicle impound lot. Now that would be a real deterrent. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, Jason, followed by Ed Zercher.
Hello. Jason Donners, residing in Sammamish for 46 years at 101 224th Place Southeast. I also own property at 22407 Southeast 4th Street, which is adjoining to the Commons Park. I am not in favor of a moratorium that will stop progress of the long-awaited development of the town center. I'm concerned that the $4 million TIB grant awarded for the 4th Street improvement in 2015 will be in jeopardy with construction, which was slated to begin in 2016, but the city put that project on hold until 2017. If the constructions does not start by May 2017, we are at risk of losing the funding for this currently. Both my properties are under contract with developers. I have pre-applications, they have pre-applications filed with the city, and a moratorium in 2005 and a recession in 2008 virtually halted progress of the town center. We finally have the momentum, and we have viable buyers for this project that will come with road improvements to Southeast 4th. In closing, I believe another moratorium in the city of Sammamish will adversely impact the future of the long-awaited town center. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Ed Zercher, followed by Todd Levitt.
Hi, my name is Ed Zercher. I reside at 22244 Southeast 4th Street. I'm a 17-year resident of Sammamish. This is where I got married, this is where I raised three children, this is where I got divorced, this is where my hair turned gray. It's where I live now, it's where I love living, it's where we play, it's where we pray, it's where we shop, it's where we eat, it's where I want to live for many years to come. I want to speak on the topic that is so powerful in the room tonight, and that is the discussion agenda item around a potential moratorium. Now, this only came to my attention yesterday, and I find it rather alarming, given how far we've come. I'm only one of hundreds of Sammamish citizens that's been intimately involved for more than a decade in the thoughtful planning and deliberation of what has now become the town center. The town center offers goods, services, jobs, restaurants that our community and very dedicated planning commission spent thousands of hours working on, and they recognize it as not just the desires of the community, but the needs of the community. The town center also plans to offer a variety of much-needed housing, included would be apartments, townhomes, and single-family homes as well. I've always felt that the best way to keep Sammamish, our beloved bedroom community, a bedroom community, would be to centralize residential density and minimize residential sprawl. It's exactly what the town center does, that's what it was intended to do. And then I hear that there is discussion about a moratorium in the city. We've had them before, they lasted for years and years, like Jason and others described. It handcuffed the citizens that lived in that area. The town center is good for the community and fulfills long-awaited needs. It's been more than a decade in the making. The community participated in the town center process, they asked for it. The planning commission guided the process and embraced it. I'm here to ask all of you to stop giving the residents of Sammamish a reason to drive off the plateau for goods and services that should be here in our own backyard. I ask all of you to shut down any further discussions in consideration of a developed moratorium, especially not at the town center, that might bring these years of dedication and planning to a halt. Thank you for this time.
Thank you, Ed. Todd Levitt, followed by Deb Soggy.
Todd Levitt, 14410 Belray Road, Bellevue, Washington. Good evening, councilmembers. Is this working? Hear me? My name is Todd Levitt, and I represent Murray Franklin. Murray Franklin has been developing communities and building homes in the city of Sammamish since its inception as a city in 1999, and many years even well before that. Murray Franklin has been building homes when it was unincorporated King County. We have built several thousands of homes over the years here in Sammamish, and really consider ourselves a part of the community that has helped create Sammamish into what it is today, a beautiful city that many people love living in. On September 8th, I attended the town hall meeting on growth here in these chambers. I sat at one of the roundtables and mainly just listened for a good chunk of the meeting. As I just sat and mainly listened quietly for a while, when we broke into roundtable discussions, finally, my fellow table members who didn't know who I was asked who I was. I told them who I was and who I worked for, and that while I don't personally live in the community, I do believe we, and that's being Murray Franklin as a builder, are a part of the community since we have been building here for 30-plus years. My table that night was atypical of the general attendees that night, who were upset at the pace of growth taking place and generally looking for ways to address it. And mind you, no one at my table that I recall at that point in time was calling for a moratorium as an option to address these concerns. And as soon as I stated who I was and who I worked for, you could see a few looks on their faces basically saying, wow, you've got guts to be here. And two people, two of those people, sitting right on each side of me stated, good for you, as you are very much part of this community and happy you are taking part in this. And I thought more about that afterwards, in that not only have we built here for a very long time, we have employees who live here in Sammamish. We have contractors, consultants, who we employ, that live here in Sammamish. Yes, we really are part of this community. So at that moment, I finally felt the comfort level to speak, perhaps shed some light to the table as to why growth is not such a bad thing. Yes, traffic has increased, there's no denying that. But what I told them is, look, what is happening here is not because of the building community, we are just trying to meet the housing demand. Trying, be a key word, being a key word, as I will come back to that in a second. What is happening here is the macroeconomy of Seattle is very, very healthy. Companies continue to relocate here and bring back high-paying jobs to Seattle. That is a good thing, everyone. Lest us not forget 2008 to 2012. And I'm guessing everyone at this roundtable, as I told everyone there, owns a property or a home. Basically, everyone nodded yes. Then I said, the value of your property or home has probably increased tremendously over the last few years. Again, everyone nodded yes. I said, well, that is because demand is way outpacing supply, and everyone knows the supply-demand curve of Economics 101, prices go up, and when that tilts too much to the demand side. And while good news for everyone sitting at that table, that is really bad news for others who can't afford to live here, such as your teachers, your firefighters, your policemen, policewomen, et cetera, and also your grandkids and your kids. If they want to live here and raise their family, is it really affordable at this point for a young family? Probably not. And not one person disagreed with what I was saying. So everyone, I believe, agreed that growth is not a bad thing, as it helps sustain the demand and address the economic curve much better. We just need to be smarter about it and embrace it rather than shun it. And thus, the focus and ideas at the table that night turned to discussion points of how better to address traffic, land plans, environmental concerns, et cetera. There was what I would call rational and smarter approach to addressing growth coming from our table at the end of the evening. A majority of the table suggested... A majority of the table suggested similar methods to addressing the concerns outside of using a moratorium. And now it seems, with a moratorium discussion on the table, this is not what I took from that evening as a consensus from the residents, and I know many of you were sitting in there that evening, and Mayor, I'm almost done, so bear with me.
Okay.
So it is disappointing to hear that perhaps council either took that as a takeaway, or just taking a different tact for reasons that are not clear to me. As I started off, Murray Franklin is a part of this community, past and present, and very much desires that for the future. Moratoriums will have major impacts on employees, families, and the market. Prices will even escalate further, as the man's side of the equation you cannot address, that is outside of your powers and abilities to address. And there are no signs that is going away anytime soon. So rather than shun growth and try to stop it and dramatically impact people's livelihoods, be smarter about it and embrace it. Work within the many other tools you have in your arsenal, such as the CIP Fund, to really address what is mainly on everyone's mind of concern, infrastructure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Todd. Followed by Velma Johnson.
Good evening, council and mayor. I'm Deb Soggy with the Samamish Chamber of Commerce at 704 228th Avenue Northeast Samamish. And I just want to say that tomorrow's the last day of the market, the farmer's market right here, and I invite everyone in this crowd to please come out and support your local farmers, so they come back next year all happy. We are going to have a family bunch of games going on, Find the Pumpkin, Trick or Treat, Preview. Come out and preview your costumes, and it's going to be a lot of fun, and the last chance to get that fresh farm food, direct from the farm, so please come out. And we'll have a lot of dinner trucks on hand, so come and eat dinner. But most importantly, I want to make sure you know that you need to park at Mary Queen of Peace, because we are, the community center is still redoing their parking lot, and we don't want to have a backup onto 228th. So please park at Mary Queen of Peace and use the path that comes over to the market, and we welcome you with open arms. The other thing I want to mention is, I want to thank the council for the years of thoughtful consideration and all the work you've done for growth here in Samamish. The development, especially the village going in, is going to answer a lot of business needs, a lot of services and products that our residents need. And I think it's been very thoughtful in your process that you've worked on developing this city, and I applaud you, and I hope that you will go forward with more thoughtful consideration. And just keep in mind that our residents really don't want to leave the plateau to get their services and products, if they can stay here, and that helps our economy, it helps our local small business. The other thing I want to bring up is, I know you're going to have an update on the college possibility at Mars Hill with Central Washington, and I just want to say on behalf of the chamber that we think it's a marvelous idea. It will keep people in Samamish to do Running Start, it'll help parents so they don't have to find transportation for their kids, to leave high school to go to Running Start, it'll be right next door practically to all these high schools. The other thing that's good, it will bring arts in, theater, regular arts, all kinds of opportunities for people that aren't destined for long-range colleges. It will also help the baby boomers like me that want to start something new. And the other thing is that it will help the local business, and we really like that idea, because people will need to go out to eat and have services, and they'll get it right here in Samamish. What a better thing to enhance our business community, it's a great thing. So I sure hope that going forward, that you'll all be in approval for the Central Washington coming, I hope that you'll welcome them, and I hope it works. I don't know where you are in the process, so I'm just giving my two cents. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, you know, you think about people coming into this city to go to the college, and yes, that could be, and that will be, but you've got to think too about the people that are living here and how they won't have to leave the city. And we are a very educated society here, and we believe in education. Let's give it to our young folks, our baby boomers, everyone. So that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Deb. Those vegetables and fruit are great. So tomorrow at Farmer's Market, what is it, 4 till 8? 4 to 7:30, good. Velma?
Yes, I'm here on the moratorium. I've lived in Samamish for 55 years, raised my family here, and I've been one of the property owners being considered as part of the new town center.
And your address is?
Pardon me?
Your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Velma Johnson, 111 228th Avenue, Northeast Samamish.
Thank you.
Yep. It's been a shock to me to hear that there's going to be another moratorium on this project that has been subject to another building moratorium. What is your explanation and why? It's really been like a fire going through Samamish. It's been a real shock to all of us. Some of us here in Samamish was looking forward to shopping at the variety of new stores and shops that have been, where you have to drive off the plateau, and we don't want to do that, we want to keep the business here in the city. I'm asking you to reconsider this moratorium and move forward with the town center and finish this important, and very important...
Project.
I can't read my own writing. Anyway, we want to see the city continue, we've looked forward to it for so long, and we hope that you do reconsider this for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Velma. Okay, Kim Stevenson, followed by Jennifer Kim.
Hi there, before I begin, I don't know who it came from, but whoever is booing, could we please hold our boos? There's more folks here in favor of development than not, so just hold your boos, please. Anyways, I am Kim Stevenson, 23924 Northeast 31st Way in Samamish. I have lived on the plateau since 1978. I used to ride my horse up and down 228th to the Sadler's Market, not being passed once by a car. The closest McDonald's was either in Redmond or Izoqua, and although I didn't understand growth at that time, I could hear my parents talking about it, and, you know, go to the one local store we had and hear people talking about it. And I was one of the lucky kids who, there was growth at that time, and I was in the middle school at that time, and the middle school couldn't accommodate for any of us, or some of us, and I had to ride the bus an hour and a half to May Valley to go to school. And again, back then, people were complaining about the growth. Now I'm a mother of three, my kids go to the local schools here, I hear complaints about growth, you know, from moms at school, or dads at school, or sitting at the baseball field, you know, hearing, oh, did you see the latest clear cut? And not only am I a resident here and a mother of a resident here, I work here, I'm a real estate agent in the city of Samamish. I represent a number of the sellers who are under contract with different developers in the city of Samamish. And just the word "moratorium" has sent anxiety through everybody. And I'm just, I guess my question is why? I mean, why are you bringing it up now? For all the folks that have concerns about growth, to me at least, it seems that the concerns are only brought up when the trees come down. There is probably, at the minimum, two years of talks, discussions, plannings between the city and the builders and the developers, and in the case of the town center, more than a decade's worth of talks and planning with the city and developers. So the community's opportunity to bring up complaints or bring up concerns, it's not like it's, it's not out of the blue, all of this development, it's been coming, it's been talked about. And in my profession, what I like to say to people is, nothing stops growth like a recession. And in 2007, when the recession first hit, the house prices dropped considerably in Samamish. Developers and builders and contractors couldn't run out of town fast enough. Now the home prices in Samamish, just in the past three years, are up 30%. We have some of the top-rated schools in the entire state, and our median income is some of the highest state. I believe now it's even higher than Mercer Island. All of this is because of growth, so why are we trying to halt it? It is planned, it is talked about, it is discussed. Again, the sellers that I represent and the builders and developers that I've worked with up here in Samamish have done nothing to cut corners. It's all been very well thought out, very well planned. Just, I guess my question to the council is, why moratorium? It just sends shockwaves and anxiety through the city.
Thank you, and we'll be discussing that question later in the evening. Jennifer Kim, followed by John Galvin.
Good evening, I'm going to be speaking on behalf of the group Safe Samamish, so I hope that I can get the five minutes. My name is Jennifer Kim, I live at 4001 239th Place Southeast. Tonight, I wanted to talk about Samamish and the Growth Management Act. When I first became interested in finding out why there was so much development going on in Samamish in the past two years, I'd heard from many people that when this city, when this question was posed to the city, that the answer was, it's because of the GMA. So after studying the GMA and the Samamish Comprehensive Plan, I have a couple of questions. So as we know, the Growth Management Act, the purpose is actually really good, it's to direct growth away from state natural resources and to concentrate growth in certain fast-growing cities. And the result is that each city has to take on a certain amount of growth over a 20-year period. So the King County Comprehensive Plan outlines how much growth and housing units each city must target. So, going to the King County Comprehensive Plan of 2016, the housing targets given for Samamish for 2006 to 2031 was 4180 housing units, which, with 350 PAA's, which is potential annexation areas. So looking at the current housing units that have been built in Samamish since 2006, year to date, our total is actually at 1,893. And then looking at future housing and annexations, the town center will add 2,000 more units, which will bring us to a total of 3,893 housing units. Now, the 2031 King County housing goal for Samamish was 4,180. So the King County goal for Samamish, even though it's over 11 years away, we are actually only 287 units away from the target for 2031. That doesn't include the annexation of Kohani that happened this year. So now looking at the Samamish revised plan for 2015 to 2035, there was a new target was adopted by Samamish, not King County, which increased the target to 4,439 housing units to the year 2035. So even with the increase in four years, we're still only 546 housing units away from the 2035 target, which is over 19 years away. And the average amount of permits issued from 2011 to 2016 was actually 212 per year. So if we keep at that pace, we're actually only about two and a half years away from our housing goal in 2035. Now looking at population, Samamish has actually grown by 47% since 2006. So 2006, we were at 41,000, today, we are a little over 62,000, including the Kohani annexation, it's an increase of about 1,000 people. So my question is, are we there yet? I was wondering, why did Samamish decide to greatly increase the housing target given to us by King County without even including the Kohani annexation? What is our growth ceiling here, and who is ultimately deciding this? Is this decided by the city manager, is it by the city council? And then who is going to be taking into account our infrastructure, if we can even handle it? Our schools are getting crowded, the traffic is getting worse, we're having some stormwater issues. So my question is... My hope for the future would be, I would like to ask the council and the city manager to have biannual check-ins, to kind of see how close are we to our target. Take a pause in approving new permits, not for the town center, which has already been approved, but new permits until these numbers can be reviewed. Have council and city staff work in conjunction to decide what pace and what type of developments will be approved in the future. One of the ones that comes to my mind is Highcroft on 228th, I think it's pretty densely populated. Looking, is that the type of aesthetics you want in Samamish? And then start looking at measures now to protect the city from lawsuits from developers and residents, once the city does reach its target. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. Some of those are good questions, and we'll probably discuss those as we, later in the evening. I mean, certainly, when you ask who determines the target, it's negotiated, the targets, the housing targets and the job targets are negotiated amongst all the cities in the county. And over the years, we've pushed back as much as we could in saying that we don't, we can't handle the targets, we're not on a freeway, let's minimize our targets. So we've had that posture through the years. Is that a correct council member, Hugabey?
And I think there's a misunderstanding that the growth targets should have been absorbed by adding Kohani. That's a separate area that would have had its own growth targets, and we absorbed that and took in their growth targets as well.
Okay, John?
John Galvin, 432 228th Avenue, Southeast. This issue has dragged me out of retirement. I thought I was finished with getting, coming to these meetings, talking about the town center. I was wrong. I'm unhappy with our healthcare system. It needs to be fixed, so I propose a moratorium on visits to the doctor. The question here, is a moratorium an appropriate way of dealing with our difficulties, with the challenges of a city like Samamish? I looked at the virtual city hall discussion, there's about 245, 250 people participating in that. It's organized so you can do a quiz assessment. There's about a handful of people that say stop growth altogether, moratorium. That's five people out of 245, 250, out of a population in Samamish of 50,000. So where is this hysteria coming from, that we need to have a moratorium? Will a moratorium help us deal with the Growth Management Act? Well, we tried that, and, you know, the council members that have been around on working with the city know that we had a moratorium for six years, which ended when the Growth Management Hearing Board told Samamish it was not compliant with the GMA. So that doesn't work. And subsequently, we've been working with the Growth Management Act, doing planning for housing, planning for services, for infrastructure. So the GMA is fundamentally important, needs to be understood. But will a moratorium help us deal with that? People on that virtual discussion pointed out, let's fix our traffic problems. Let's have roads put in before development. Let's have roads put in before development. Well, will a moratorium help with that? We have a growth pays for growth. That means development has to come with the impact fees to build roads. If you don't have development, like the town center, a $4 million grant for Southeast Fourth is dependent on the town center being built, you know? If it's not going to be built, you ain't going to get that $4 million. So, there's a close relationship between development and the money that we need to address problems like infrastructure, provide affordable housing, to do a lot of things that our citizens are asking for. So, that's the basic question. What is this proposal for a moratorium going to solve? I say, nothing, really. The town center, for example, is the most studied, most analyzed, most regulated, most attended-to piece of ground in the whole city. And it's kind of, I know Mr. Romero is a military person, so I'll use a military analogy. It's kind of like having, just as the troops are landing at the beach in Normandy, you want to call them all back to the ship, you know? We've done the plan, we've got the regulations, we've got all that we need to make a town center happen, and we're going to have a moratorium? Doesn't make sense. So, I hope tonight you can put the pin back in the hand grenade, because, you know, and let us go on and deal with all of these issues in an appropriate way. Thank you.
John's speech is always explosive. Clark Hartley, followed by Chuck and Linda. Right, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Clark Hartley. I reside at 24617 Southeast Samamish, Washington. I've lived here since 2009. I've been fortunate to keep my family in an area such as this, even under the circumstances of my employment being typically known as a mobile family. I've been able to keep my kids here in Discovery Pine Lake Middle School and see them grow. I've seen a lot of development in the years that we've lived here. My comments tonight, I'd like to direct to Mr. Valderrama. I did not know you were formerly military, so you got to understand my position on this, as I hope the council does as well. Four hours ago, I walked off one of the mightiest worships that the Navy has, so that I could come to this council meeting, to defend not just the freedoms of my family, but to address some concerns that I have about this, what was called a hand grenade of this moratorium. When you throw around words like "moratorium," that's desperation. That is, that word is indicative of, we've failed, we've done something wrong. So, my question to the council is, have you looked at your own infrastructure to find out where your failures are, that you now have to use the word "moratorium" around the city of Samamish? I've seen significant growth. I've watched the growth, large developments, small developments. I've heard talk about what is the magnification, the magnifications on the city center and the city center growth. That's, as you've heard from everybody here tonight, that's the primary focus. I'm okay with that. As a citizen, I'd love to see that happen in Samamish. It's inevitable, it's going to happen. But I'm also concerned about the collateral damage. These wonderful citizens you've heard from tonight, that have invested since the '70s or '80s in their property, knowing that someday they're going to move away into retirement and be able to maybe develop their property into something that is affordable housing, or lots where they could put in other houses, and they can walk away with money that they've earned over time. That's fair. That's something that they invested in, to rezone them because of growth interests. Maybe not, maybe not, is not in the best interest of those folks, as well as myself. The city has, has an infrastructure here at City Hall that is meant to deal with those kind of issues. You have, you have the city planner's office, who has a big picture of what Samamish is supposed to look like. You have permitting offices that are meant to address specific concerns. Why aren't we putting more pressure on them to focus in on big projects and little projects, and allow each of those projects to move forward, following the rules and guidelines that you've given? You've already given strict ordinances and strict zoning. If you, if you could just follow those, we don't need to use words like "moratorium." We just need to follow the application process and get things done. I don't have to worry about my family when I'm gone, because I believe that you guys will do the right thing. You said, "smart, caring, and making a difference" at the beginning of this meeting. You need to do that. You can't be just throwing in the towel and saying, "Let's do a moratorium and think about this." No. You've already put in the restrictions. Let them work. You restricted trees. Let it work. You just put that in like, less than six months ago, yet you're calling for a moratorium. Let it run its course. See how it affects development. I just, please, be patient. I ask you to be patient on this, and work through some of the indifferences that people have in Samamish. Thank you for your time. I also just want to, off the record, I just want to comment for the citizenship and the community I believe you're here for, scouts. I applaud you for being here, and for the recognition for the Chief of Police. I applaud his service here in Samamish for keeping my family safe. So, thank you for recognizing those and letting them do the Pledge of Allegiance. We're losing a lot of that in the country right now, and it's being felt by people out to sea. I will also not be able to attend any more of these meetings for the duration of the time that I live in Samamish, so I appreciate the time.
Besides on the ship, do you have an address here in town?
I gave, I did, yeah, I did. I gave it to you at the beginning.
Here, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry? I'm on the USS Nimitz.
All right.
Thank you for your service.
Okay, Chuck and Linda, followed by Lena Craft.
Good evening. Chuck and Linda Dolken, 2317 East Main Street in Samamish. We've lived at this address for 22 years, within earshot of Eastlake High School, and recently also within earshot of Eastside Catholic High School. Every other Friday evening or so, from our patio door, at this time of year, you could count on hearing a bellowing, "Touchdown, Eastlake!" from the stadium, some years more than others. So, we also have some feedback regarding the moratorium issue, brought up at last week's, September 13th, City Council study session. We've reviewed the video from that meeting, and do appreciate that the City Council is trying to do the right thing, by the current and future residents of Samamish weighing the issues, as well as meet legal obligations within the urban growth boundary propagated by the Growth Management Act. We appreciate that you all are weighing the initial issues brought up regarding the moratorium, like the moratorium's potential conflict with budget planning, the moratorium's legality, stormwater management resolution consequences, and others. Now that development in the area has a pretty good head of steam, we also appreciate that many in the area may be concerned with the changes they're seeing, and may in fact vilify development for that reason. So, we've been involved in the town center planning process since its inception over 10 years ago. There, of course, have been ups and downs during that time, but a solid approved plan, designed to have smart growth, is in place. Some deals, of course, need to be worked out, but it seems to us, it can be done in partnership with the right developers. Our input to the City Council is to please press ahead and keep things moving. As is the case in industry, the implementation phase of a plan can be the most difficult one. So, we ask that you not put on the brakes, but keep powering through. The 60-day input period and moratorium possibility brought up last week will add unnecessary delay and hand-wringing, and divert the resources from an already-busy City Council and city staff away from realizing the town center plan. It also seems that this is too drastic of a mechanism for the issues at hand. Moratoriums seem more appropriate for emergency situations, which this is not. So, we want to go on record as supporting moving forward with the good work, that is the town center plan, and do not support the 60-day for more input period or the moratorium. Thank you.
Lena, followed by Jeremy Sanders.
Hello, I'm Lena Craft at 22912 Southeast 37th Street. And I am here, taking a break on the moratorium talk for a moment. I'm here discussing, wanting to discuss, the YMCA property and the wetlands behind Pine Lake Middle School. And while I know this isn't scheduled to talk about with the council till the middle of November, I back that property. And I am so concerned, because we are having a large number of surveyors come on the wetlands. So, I talked to the Army about this, and the Army told me that there is, there is not supposed to be any surveyors during the dry season on wetlands, because they can get it rezoned for different areas, other than a wetland, if it's not wet. The stream that we have coming out of the Jarvis property, from Jacobs Creek, is the stream that goes through this property. So, I asked the City Council not to make any rash decisions about this property, and tell myself and other people who have a vested interest in a recreational soccer field, or whatever other citizens want to do, can get petitions and have people sign those, so we know what the citizens want to do. This property is so beautiful. I wish I could show everybody how beautiful it is, and it would be a waste if it was cut down for a recreational center. We have property across the street that Samamish has purchased, or we're trying to purchase, that the high school and the elementary school are going to go on. There's plenty of room right there for a recreational field as well, because I do have a lot of children, and I know that we do need a recreational field. However, this area has nine bears on it, bobcats, eagles. The wildlife is spectacular. And I think perhaps if we could make a preserve, a forest preserve on it with trails and swings for children, that this would be beautiful for the next 300 years. We could make it for our great-great-grandchildren, and something that we would enjoy as well. So, I just asked the City Council not to act on anything, and wait till the November, I think it's 13th or 15th, meeting, so we can pull together all the citizens' desires. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have it on our calendar to act on it, and we have asked the city manager to do some survey work out there. It's certainly not to determine a wetland in a dry season, but of course, you can identify the soil types.
Right. And actually, we may not be the only group out there. Pine Lake Middle School is also being redeveloped, and so, there's some question as to who is actually on that particular piece of property. So, we are working on trying to find some of the answers to that. And I saw, I saw your email from this evening, and we'll respond to it.
Yeah, I've asked the city for copies of all the surveyors, all the companies that they're using, and the cost that is costing the city to have them surveyed, because now the Army, the wetland protects, the Army protects the wetlands. And I have a person there helping me with the wetlands, because I'm really worried that it's going to get rezoned for a different area.
You mean the Army Corps?
Corps of Engineers.
Corps of Engineers.
Yeah, and be canceled out as a wetland. So, that's what myself and a bunch of other citizens are worried about.
I just wanted to clarify, I think, Ms. Craft made a comment that we were purchasing land for a high school and a middle school, and that's the Issaquah School District, and they're looking at the City Church property, which is in the city of Issaquah, for that development. That doesn't have anything to do with us.
What about the Mars, what about the Mars property? Is there any way we could put a recreational center there?
Well, right now, we're exploring it for higher education, because that's the purpose we acquired it for.
Okay. All right, but there's a lot of citizen input still that I would like to gather, and I would like other people to gather. You know, I don't expect everybody to jump on my train, but I would just like citizen input.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jeremy Sanders, followed by Edie Hurt. Edie, followed by Bill Hammond.
Mayor Jaren, and members of the City Council, and all of the audience, I am here on behalf of Eastside Baby Corner, and I live at 2026 201st Avenue, Southeast Samamish. And I'm here to thank the council for proclaiming National Diaper Need Awareness Week. Baby Corner is a nonprofit in Issaquah, and one of the major things we do is provide diapers for families who have babies and children in need. This year, we are giving out, or last year, we gave out 850,000 diapers, and we're now on track to give over a million diapers, just to the people on the east side of King County this year. So, I want to thank the council for recognizing that there is a need for diapers. The federal government, the WIC programs, the food stamp programs, SNAP, they do not allow families to purchase diapers with those dollars. So, they have to somehow figure out a way to do it. So, Eastside Baby Corner helps to provide that. So, thank you so much for proclaiming that, and for helping Eastside Baby Corner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can you imagine a million diapers? Certainly, a third of our population, almost a third, is under age 18, and a fair number of those still need diapers. And a few over 75.
I didn't think that we were going to talk about healthcare. My name is Bill Hammond. I reside at 24017 Northeast 14th Street, Samamish. I'd like to speak against the moratorium. As a resident of 32 years in Samamish, we have moved to this site because we loved it. It was beautiful, pristine, undeveloped, and so on. And I can really see why so many of our neighbors want very much to preserve the beauty of this wonderful place. In our process, we are like a couple of the speakers who have gone before. We're in the process of retiring, and how does one manage that? And the equity in our property is a significant fraction of our plan. For our process, we've actually begun all of this, and I actually spoke to the council previously, against the tree ordinance when it was passed, because it was a definite inhibitor of the process. And we have now had two pre-application meetings, have done a tree survey, have had an arborist survey, discovered that a depression in the ground constituted a wetland, therefore had a wetland survey. And if there has ever been an inhibitor of the process of development, you have most of those in place. From my perspective, the issue is really this idea of moratorium versus a land process that will work. We've worked very closely with the city. We've talked with the water department. My seatmate has been helping us look at, well, what is the issue about water and sewer for our development? Our process is very tortuous, as it is, and for the city to decide that moratorium is the right way to deal with this, with all of the uncertainty that that creates, and as you know, once you implement a moratorium, your risk of having that stand for a prolonged period is significant. So, the idea that that is a good planned way to go forward seems almost unkind. So, for those of us who are in the position of responsibly working to development, and we're working not, we're not, there's not going to be clear-cutting. There's going to be 35% tree retention, it's going to be R1-zone property, and it'll be beautiful. And it'll be the kind of estate properties that you would like to have in the city of Samamish. Frankly, directly across the street from us on Northeast 14th Street, there's this little place that used to be called the Mystic Lake Platte. And the Mystic Lake Platte, if any of you are familiar with it, was zoned R4, but because it was in this King County, rather than in the city of Samamish... But because it was in this King County rather than in the city of Samamish, the development process separated out 32 of the 44 acres, leaving 12.5 acres on which the developers were allowed, by agreement with the city of Samamish, to place a full complement of houses, i.e., there are 115 properties being placed on 12.5 acres. And this is about to be incorporated as an annexation into the city of Samamish. So that's the kind of process that we want to really think a little bit about, because that concentration constitutes an R10 development. So if we want to think about this, let's use the rules that we have in the city of Samamish to make responsible development go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Yes.
One bit of information, that actually, the city of Samamish did not approve those houses on that property. It was under King County's rules and not the city of Samamish.
And King County has gross density rules.
Correct.
Thank you. Next is Upinder Dinsa. Followed by Douglas Bean.
My name is Upinder Dinsa. I live at 215 East Lake Samamish Parkway, Southeast. And I am one of those, I guess, unique individuals in a way. I have had the honor of serving the United States, various parts of the Defense Department, Secretary of State Department, have actually know the ship that our good officers just came off of, Patriot missiles, submarines, all of the U.S. defense systems. I was heading up Raytheon's operations for several years for that. I retired and came back to Samamish. I used to live in Bellevue. I left Bellevue and came to Samamish. A year later, moved my son over here, moved my nephew over here. But I'm also one of those who's actually a developer. You may recall me Deputy Mayor from a meeting we had the other night on 212th, one of my projects. I'm also the one who's building seven homes on the lake. Right here, if you go on Lake Samamish, you will see seven homes on the waterfront area. That's my project. I have another project here on 212th. My point is that here's a real live example of a person who wants to live in Samamish because they love it. I'm moving my family over here, but I'm also in favor of balanced development. And moratoriums are absolutely a killer. I'll tell you one little incident, which I wasn't happy about. I'm a great fan of Samamish's staff. Many people spoke earlier. They are one of the most professional staff that I have worked with. I have worked with various other cities all around here, and I'll tell you, when I was building my home on the water, I got more ideas from your staffers to do things better. And they are not easy, trust me. They are pretty tough, but they follow the rules, but they give you good solutions and good ideas. So here's a project on 212th that I've been working on for almost a year. And suddenly, the ordinance came out where it said, okay, hold off 1,000 foot, stop everything. We were on site that day, actually visiting with the city staffers to look at whether it's a pond or it is just a regular piece of water, or is it a ditch, or is it a stream? I actually applaud that. I know Kathy Curry very well. I've gotten to know her. Now she's gone. My point is, we went through all that. And here is the sad part. For a person who has worked hard all my life at the highest levels worldwide in the government, so I know how to work with various issues, solutions. We were having a meeting with the city staffers. Next morning, we sent a request for extension of our project, and it was rejected because it didn't come in on time. Cost me six months' worth of work. You remember, Deputy Mayor, you were there that night. That was the third meeting, all the neighbors were calling. And these are the neighbors, some of them would say, well, wait a minute. I built my home here. You have no right to build yours now. Well, I am an investor. I am a resident, and I love cities, this city. So this is where I'm moving my business here, building smaller units, smaller areas. And I would request that moratoriums and/or red tape is not something I associated city of Samamish with. Other cities, yes, I did. It was a record here for a while that if I came in with a permit, it would get approved in two months or two and a half months, because I was so thorough, having worked with the highest levels of U.S. government. So I request that you please revisit. I agree with the tree. I got hit with that. I have four projects going on right now in different stages in city of Samamish, and that's a lot of money we are spending. My retirement money, I worked hard for it, and I'm putting it back in the city. So I would request, I'm happy to help. Come, give any suggestions, since I've worked all around the world, but please do consider, as all my neighbors and friends have said here, no moratoriums, and let us come with solutions to you. And these things about you're one day late or one next morning, you put in a request, and I have to go back through all the steps of pre-application, that's not very becoming. And I have let the city staff know that. Thank you for listening to me. Appreciate it. I'm not shy.
Douglas Bean, followed by Mike Flaker.
So I represent four brothers and a sister who all live in Samamish. I moved here in 1976. I was lucky enough to ride my bicycle from Margaret Mead down to Platte Pantry to get, because that was the only thing around. And I remember Saholi Way falling in. I thought that was the coolest as a child. That was the last time. We didn't listen to the Army Corps of Engineers, by the way. I am here, I've actually been here a couple times in the past. I've represented some large youth soccer organizations, so I have strong feelings about fields. But that's not why I'm here today. I'm here today, it's kind of a conversation about individual rights and collective good. And it's clearly obvious that even if, this is just an opinion, even if the city council feels the collective good might be served by moratorium, the reality is, is I think you're too far past that point, actually. I think you're now trampling on individual rights. Keep in mind, I did, so I did move my family from Heritage Hills to a two-acre lot, and I am trying to build one house. It is just one house.
What's the address of that?
Twenty, what is my address? I've lived in three houses in Samamish, so it's 2028 East Lake Samamish Parkway.
Thank you.
It's not on the water, actually. I can't afford that stuff. But, so I will admit, I do have skin in the game. I would like to build one house. It's probably not even to do with anything else. But everyone knows that real desire, that guy who spoke two or three times ago, it's really a conversation of density. Everybody knows that we have an awesome place to live, and we can't keep people from out. That's kind of crazy talk. And I think if you were to survey a bunch of people, I have nieces and nephews at every elementary school on the north side of Samantha. Carson, McColliff, Mead, Blackwell, Inglewood, Eastlake, six schools in Samamish I cover right now. And I promise you, they're totally cool with people moving in. It's a great place. In fact, we're totally cool with people building nice, simply, they don't, it'd be nice if they're all gigantic, because then, you know, well, maybe someday you could live in there, right? But my point is, is I don't think too many people are in favor of six-story apartments. That's just a personal opinion. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. But I think it's really a question of density, so I would encourage you to consider being flexible on that red tape that they were talking about. That actually is pretty substantial. So the pieces in place, people are freaking out about things that were approved two years ago, and shame on what was going on two years ago. Shame, shame, shame. I know we have a lot of new faces, and I, the red tape now is dramatic, and I'm pretty sure there's nothing two years from now that could even look remotely close to like the clear cutting that we get these days. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
The guy after me had to go.
Oh.
But he was against the moratorium.
Speaking for him. Sam Rotabah, followed by Mary Victor.
Good evening. My name is Sam Rotabah. My business address is 11820 Northrop Way, Suite E200 in Bellevue. I'm a land use and real estate attorney. I am also a longtime resident of the city of Samamish. My, I attended the roundtable discussion on growth on September 8th of this year, and I think I learned one thing, which is if you give a public forum for people to complain, they'll complain. I saw a room full of mini boomers and Gen Xers that got theirs, but surprisingly had little hesitation in preventing the next generation from getting theirs. Now, an event like that is a field day for politicians. There's nothing more that politicians like than an alleged high-profile problem in search of a solution. Which brings us to the topic tonight of the proposed moratorium. With all due respect, a moratorium is not the solution. As I looked around that room that evening, I realized one thing. Education is the solution. There were many people who had never heard of the Growth Management Act, and that incorporating the city in 1999, under the presence of the Growth Management Act, meant that we were going to accommodate our prorata fair share of the anticipated growth in the region. There were many who had never heard of the difference between a net density calculation and a gross density calculation, and that for developers, the city's net density calculation is already the most onerous of any eastside city, which limits our density compared to other local jurisdictions. There were many that were still complaining about Highcroft and the Connor Jarvis development and the lack of trees. And they didn't realize that the city had already adopted what many of the council members proclaimed as the most stringent tree retention standard in the region since those projects were vested, and that there are many projects in the city that have already fallen through because small developments have a hard time meeting that standard. In those cases, we weren't sticking it to the proverbial developer. We were sticking it to the mom and pop who were sitting on that property and planning on having that for their retirement. There were many people who didn't realize that our city impact fees, if you were to do a jurisdictional cross-comparison, are already much higher than adjoining jurisdictions, that the cost of connecting to sewer in the South Samamish Sewer and Water District is considerably higher than many comparable sewer jurisdictions, and that if we heard more from our representative from Murray Franklin and other developers tonight, that if you were to do a jurisdictional comparison of the costs of development, we probably are already the highest of any of our adjoining jurisdictions. Which leads to a whole nother question about affordable housing. We can leave for another night. I think that education isn't splashy. It doesn't make the headlines, but it's the right thing to do because we don't have many other options. Development will come, and we already have as stringent regulations as we can have. So I would advise the council not to adopt a moratorium. Let's take, if you're going to take 60 days to look at our city and how we're doing, do a jurisdictional comparison of your impact fees. Do a jurisdictional comparison of how stringent our tree retention requirements are. And once you start doing that, you'll realize that we already are one of the most stringent jurisdictions when it comes to development, and that many of these complaints are simply misplaced. Thank you.
Sam, I just wanted to comment on one thing. I really do appreciate your comments with regards to education on the GMA, because that is something that I and the rest of the communications committee has been pushing for. So I appreciate the public feedback on that as well.
Good. Mary Victor, followed by Eva Otto.
Hello, my name's Mary Victor. I live at 408 208th Avenue, Northeast, in Samamish. And I just handed out one sheet that should go with bill number 13. It's pages 185 through 188 in your packet tonight, and it's on your stormwater and surface water management responsibilities already from your code. But I'm speaking on a different topic using my PowerPoint. Tonight, I want to talk about landslide hazard area and the drainage area associated with those. As you know, there's a project number 12 in the capital improvements for a trunk line that's desperately needed for stormwater in Tamarack. There's tons of stormwater on you guys' calendar all the way through December, and I wanted to talk about possibly a targeted moratorium. King County, and they put a sensitive overlay called number 190, and it's shown here on the map in the purple areas that are hashed, and it's for erosion hazards near sensitive water bodies. Council's worked on lots of code for this over the years, and you can see it runs all the way from the bottom up to the top across the lake. I kind of call that the shoulder area. Also, in 1990, King County adopted some environmentally sensitive or critical areas for geologic hazards, which included landslide hazard areas, which are in dark yellow, and landslide hazard drainage areas, which are in light yellow. And I wanted to thank Tony Dollzel and Cheryl Paston and the GIS people for the April draft of the Stormwater Comp Plan, which actually took both these overlays and put them on one single map. You can see the erosion hazards there at the very bottom. You'll see the landslide hazard areas entirely enclosed in the erosion area, so all the erosion provisions count for those areas. You'll also see parts of Pine Lake Creek and Ebright Creek there in the middle also get some of those erosions. And then on the very north side, you'll see most of those landslide hazard areas are also in the erosion, in the area that looks like this, that's in white, that's erosion. Only that's Saholi, which was done in 1970, '74 and '77 with drainage, just gets the erosion things. The area of concern that I have is where the words "Lake Samamish" are, and I want to zoom in on that for a second. You can see Zaccus Creek there is in a landslide hazard area, and then to the north of it, you'll see George Davis Creek. And if you look, there's kind of a shape that looks like my hand here. And this part here is what I call the isthmus, or the belly band that runs through Tamarack. I wanted to draw a Tamarack on there for you. The concern that I have is we do have a landslide hazard that runs all the way through, and that gets not noticed a lot. The landslide hazard drainage area, you'll notice there is not a yellow area in some portions of that, and some portions of that definitely drain into our landslide hazard area. The problem with landslides is we really need more of the erosion-type protections that are already in the code in Samamish municipal code. We need drainage review for those areas, and there need to be more requirements. For example, here, if you're category one targeted, you don't have to do discharge or off-site analysis or flow control or conveyance systems, and that can lead to water quality problems. We really need tighter code permits and oversight for landslide hazard areas. So I am for a targeted moratorium. The Growth Management Act requires that the city identify critical areas and provide protection for them. There's a lot of code coming your way all the way through the end of December. There's a lot of maps, some of them are new coming up. We have had 40 new homes built in Tamarack in 16 years, 20-year-long a northeast 4th Street corridor that needs surface water-constructed facilities. 10 of those are in a landslide hazard area. We have many development-related issues from stormwater. The city has received over a decade of complaints. There are currently four to six lots that want to build, and I am concerned about the code and the drainage review. So I would suggest that before one more house tries to build in Tamarack, that you look at putting a moratorium, even an immediate one, on Tamarack, and also include the Zaccus Creek watershed. And then you can do that and look at that while you're doing your NPDES and permit level two requirements that you're required to do through the end of December. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Eva Otto, followed by Dave Augustine.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Eva Otto, and my address is 4031 Evanston Avenue in Seattle. I'm here to make a comment tonight about the talk of a moratorium on the agenda, and I'm here because I work as a land broker, and I've been working here for the last four years with a group of a dozen landowners in the Samamish Town Center who have been actively participating over the last 10 years, from the inception of the concept of the Town Center to, you know, surveying and putting forth creative ideas and sitting through all of the meetings and coming up with ultimately a great vision. I came upon the vision four years ago to live, work, and play, to keep everyone here locally. I specialize in environmentally friendly properties, so I think that the idea of localizing your town center and having the services here that people don't have to drive off the plateaus is excellent. And I think that there's been a lot of forethought and planning that's gone into your process. And I had some landowners who can't be here tonight specifically ask me to come to tell you that they aggressively would like you to not support a moratorium. I can tell you that we've been, the hardest job in getting this town center off the ground, besides the planning, has been assembling the land for a developer to be able to submit a UZDP and be able to actually plan the infrastructure for the town. There's also the paying for the infrastructure, and I think it has taken a lot of years to allow the stars to align, for the plan to come together, for the developer to step up and to acquire the land. It's taken two years now, you know, there's 240 acres in the town center. A third of that is now under contract and pending closing. All of those landowners have, you know, retained lawyers to help them through the process. process. And so, as a broker, I completely understand that when the trees start coming down and the development starts happening, that, you know, it's change. And people have been here for 30 years, and they don't want to see the, this beautiful rural area, you know, become a traffic nightmare. I think you guys have done the studies, the traffic studies, you've done the stormwater studies, and I think that the idea that you're going to select one specific area and densify the development and put the housing in a place that's pedestrian-friendly and walkable is, you know, I give a lot of credit to that vision. And now we're standing on the precipice of that happening. We've got all the stars aligned, and then, you know, the bomb drops or the grenade goes off, a moratorium. And I think that I speak for over a dozen landowners who would hope that you would see that it's a, you know, hey, do we need this? No, we don't, because we have a great plan in place, we have an excellent city staff who can help implement the infrastructure, and they would like to move forward with this great plan that's on the table. So I hope that you will consider dropping the topic of the moratorium and moving forward with the plan that's coming to you very shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva. Dave Augustine, followed by Holly Moffett.
Good evening. My name's Dave Augustin, 723-212th Avenue Southeast. I've lived and worked in Sammamish for just about 25 years now. When my wife and child at the time moved to Sammamish, we wanted to make an investment, and we made an investment in land. And quite honestly, I'm one of those landowners that hopefully someday will be able to reap the rewards, and I oppose the moratorium. We have already, I mean, I know I look young, but I'm not. And I'm getting ready to retire, and my little piece of property, my little acre and a half that I have, is part of my retirement. We've already spent some money, thousands of dollars, doing civil engineering for the piece of property. So I've already made an investment. I haven't, I don't have an application in yet. I hope to sell my property sometime soon, because my retirement horizon is right around the corner. So I personally think that the moratorium, or even the talk of the moratorium, is kind of a knee-jerk reaction to what we're seeing. We're seeing lots of development on the plateau. Well, that's because the last few years, there hasn't been a lot of development on the plateau because of the crappy market that we've had. Now, we're playing a little catch-up. I remember even hearing at one time, we talked about, the city council was talking about at one time, getting rid of some staff in the building department because there just wasn't enough inspections to go around? That's how little development was going on. Now, I gotta guess it's going the other way around. We're just playing catch-up right now, and that's what, that's scaring people out there. I get it. I totally get that. But I think this is a knee-jerk reaction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave. Holly, followed by John Hanson.
Holly Moffett, my property is 416-228th Avenue Southeast. Today, I'd like to urge you to move ahead on development of the Sammamish Town Center. The plans have already been adopted, and many studies for sewer, stormwater, transportation, education were undertaken.
Can you speak closer to the mic, please?
This plan was good enough when it was adopted, and it remains so. The town center plan includes commercial space, which aligns with the goal of providing more goods and services on the plateau, so that residents don't have to go as often to Issaquah and Redmond. This lessens the commuting burden for families in development properties, generate revenues to the city via various forms of taxation. My property in the town center area is currently under contract, and the mere mention of a building moratorium poses a risk that would be buyer, the buyers rightfully questioning Sammamish's ability to make a decision and stick to it. This process started 15 years ago, and the council at the time was very diligent, took the time to get a model for town center that would work well for existing residents, commercial growth, and accommodate new residents while maintaining a great quality of life. A building moratorium only burdens Sammamish taxpayers more so by doing, redoing studies that have been completed and will delay additional commercial space, which would help make the plateau more livable. In conclusion, I implore the deputy mayor and other council members who were not on council when this plan was adopted to schedule time with the mayor, who was president for every single agonizing meeting and hearing that has brought us to this point. The time for planning the town center has passed. The plan just needs to be implemented now. Let's do it.
Thank you, Holly. John Hanson. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council?
Stacy Peters. I'm at 4040-240th Place Southeast. I'm here to represent maybe a not very popular opinion tonight, but I felt I had to say something after hearing all of these people discuss their viewpoints. So, I don't know if a moratorium is the right thing to do or not. I mean, honestly, I don't envy you at all in your position. That's a really tough decision. I think that personally, I don't think the town center is the right place to focus it if you were to do a moratorium. When I first learned about the town center, it was not something I was very excited about, but as I've learned more about it and learned more about our growth targets and what is going to happen in Sammamish, I've grown to like the idea of the town center. I think it's a good way to focus our growth into the density of the town center. And I think that, as people have said this evening, there's been so much work and groundwork laid into that, that I think the town center should proceed. I don't think that we should get in the way of that personally. But what I find particularly concerning is developments like Highcroft, which are subdivisions in which very, very large homes are put on very, very small lots, very, very close together. And they don't seem to represent the Sammamish that I moved into and that a lot of us love, and the traffic that comes with those. I think we need to do something about the infrastructure, and that is really where I think we need to focus the attention of the city council. And again, you know, these people that own an acre, an acre and a half, two acres, and want to put two or three homes on them, I mean, that's barking up the wrong tree if that's where you're going to put a pause on things. I think, I don't know how you do it. I don't know if you have legality to do it. I don't know if it's the right thing, if it's too late, but if there's a way to create something with these subdivisions so they aren't as atrocious as what we see on Highcroft, I think that's really what I would like to see in the future. But I don't know if that's even something that can be done at this point in time, but ideally, that's what I would like to see. So that's what I think.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Is there anybody else? Yes.
Hi, I'm Denise Darnell. My address is 2121-200th Avenue Southeast, Sammamish, Washington. It's Sammamish Woods, and I'm also in the minority this evening, so thank you for letting me to speak. I agree with what the woman said just before me, that I don't think the town center moratorium is necessarily the answer. I think what many of us are looking at is the huge amount of traffic. If you're part of any of the commute at 7:00 in the morning, you can easily see that. We're looking at the clear cut that happened across from Pine Lake Middle School a couple years ago with the development there. We're looking at Jarvis. We're looking at Highcroft. And I know a while back in the beginning, a realtor was asking, why are these people questioning all this now? This has been going on for so long, and we've been having all these meetings. And it's because, I think for the most of us, we sort of trusted that things were going to be protected. We thought that the environment, the wildlife, the beauty of this area would be first and foremost the most important thing, and we all became alarmed when Highcroft happened. I think that woke a lot of people up. Many people that I spoke to are not activists, like some of us who are here tonight, and so they don't come to these meetings. But we made a petition this summer, and we were able to get over 1,500 signatures in a little bit over a month of time, of citizens that were also alarmed by the type of development that is happening. And I appreciate the developers tonight that said that they're trying to make very thoughtful developments. That's one of our big concerns, that we're looking at these neighborhoods like mine in Sammamish Woods. It's acres of land, and we don't want six houses put on an acre. And we're questioning the zoning, which I understand from education is through the Puget Sound Growth Management Board, and is not a city thing that you guys can change, but still having thoughtful development with the type of zoning and what is allowed, and how can we go to the county and talk about changing zoning or protecting those acres that should only be zoned for R1? I work for the Iskwa School District. I work at Discovery Elementary, and my kids go to Pine Lake Middle School and Skyline, and they went to Creekside. I see the huge overcrowding in these schools, and I appreciate the realtors selling this area by saying what wonderful schools we have, and we do. And the reason we have wonderful schools is because we have great families that live here. But you need to come to the schools and see how crowded they are already. So when you're advertising them, it's important to also be realistic. How many more people and how many more cars can we fit on 2/28th at 7:00 in the morning when you have that many schools already? That's our concern. Our second concern is how many houses do we want to squeeze into this whole area? And we all take pause to look at the beautiful wildlife, but I just don't want to only be able to see it in a picture 10 years from now. I want to be able to drive down the street and not almost start to cry when I see how many trees have been clear-cut in a week for a new development. So I'm just asking the council, and I really appreciate Kristi and how great she's been with communication, to continue with your virtual town hall. There's just 200 people, you know, joining in, but there will be more and more as we keep going, and to keep supporting why we all moved here, which is because of the beauty of the area. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, regarding R1 zoning, I might point out that when we incorporated, we were told that the minimum zoning for urban was R4. We were able to convince the powers that be that approved our first comprehensive plan, that there are areas of R1 in our city that should stay R1, and we got that through. But R4 is the standard safe harbor. Yes, Dave?
Mayor Jaren. Council members, oh.
Yes, Tom?
Yeah, Don, I think part of a discussion needs to be around some of the areas where R4 doesn't work for reasons of water runoff and erosion hazard, that type of thing. Building stuff on steep slopes, perhaps R4 is not appropriate for that. Look at what's happening in, at Inglewood, we had to put a moratorium on there. Look what's happening in Tamarack, we're talking about doing something there, not sure what yet. But R4 is not necessarily the answer for Sammamish, which I pointed out to Dale Constantine a couple months ago at a Growth Management Planning Commission meeting, and frankly, he agreed that where you're transitioning at the urban growth boundary, you may not want to have R4, R6, R8, and where you have some of the geological issues we have, it may not be appropriate either. So we need to keep pushing on that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
I thought I was being interrupted by God for a second.
Close. Thank you, Dave.
Mayor Jaren and council members, my name is David Hoffman. I'm with the Master Builders Association. Address is 335-116th Avenue Southeast in Bellevue. I have some prepared comments tonight, and I will rattle through these as quickly as I can. I'm here to share some thoughts related to growth, and not surprisingly, I'm sure, share some thoughts related to the moratorium discussion on your agenda. A National Association of Realtors analysis released yesterday shows that the Seattle-Tacoma-Bellevue region has a massive shortage of new single-family homes. From 2013 to 2015, our region added nearly 150,000 jobs, while only permitting 26,000 new single-family homes. This leaves us with a permit shortfall of 73,000 new homes. Is anyone surprised that we have an affordability crisis? It doesn't surprise my members. Today, it's more difficult than ever for home builders to find land on which to build new homes. This makes the remaining land very valuable, and in combination with our growing economy is exacerbating our housing crisis. On September 8th, I attended the Community Roundtable on Growth hosted by the city along with 150 Sammamish residents and several of my members. There were some interesting ideas presented during the report out from each of the tables. One of the ideas, which was repeated at nearly every table, had to do with the city addressing the multitude of transportation issues that the community deals with on a daily basis. I was late to the meeting tonight because of those transportation issues, trying to get up here on the plateau. I believe there was some good news provided by Community Development Director Jeff Thomas in his presentation at the beginning of the meeting. He described how during its first 16 years, the city invested $80 million in transportation. Meanwhile, between now and 2022, the city is scheduled to invest $95 million to address existing and future transportation needs. Sammamish is already getting serious about addressing transportation. Home builders certainly want to see these investments happen, partly because a big chunk of that $95 million comes from the proceeds from real estate excise tax on new homes, sales taxes from new homes, increased property tax collections from new homes, and finally, the nearly $15,000 transportation impact fee the city collects for each new home. And that's just the transportation impact fee. But we also want to see these investments happen because, as some of the builders have already said tonight, they and their employees live in and around Sammamish, and they care deeply about the community here. They are invested here for the long run. Included in the ideas related to addressing transportation needs in the city was the concept that the city should consider assuming debt to pay for the infrastructure needs of the city. The MBA, Master Builders Association, stands ready to partner with the city to make sure that that transportation infrastructure is built. Although the concept of a moratorium was discussed, it was specifically in light of the recently adopted moratorium in Issaquah. There are important distinctions related to the Issaquah moratorium that should be noted. The moratorium in Issaquah was not aimed at single-family detached development, but rather the city's central area. Am I already at five minutes? Okay. As Issaquah's central area has begun to develop, the city is not seeing the outcomes they were planning for in their comprehensive plan related to mixed-use development and affordable housing. Issaquah does not incentivize or require mixed-use or affordable housing in their central area. Code. Sammamish doesn't have the same issues with town center. The town center plan includes very successful affordable housing incentive program, as well as mixed-use requirements. Over the most recent 18 months, the city has embarked on a series of code updates that has responded in dramatic fashion to the community's concerns over development, including the development at Highmark and other developments throughout the city. The Tree Ordinance adopted in October 2015 dramatically increased tree retention, requires one-for-one replacement of significant trees, incentivizes the retention of the largest trees on site, and will result in a dramatic increase in the city's tree canopy over the coming years. It's important to note that several of the most controversial development projects in Sammamish were vested to the old tree code, so the new rules did not apply. Also, the tree code does not apply to the town center plan, since town center will be a highly urbanized area, and it would be inappropriate to include an aggressive tree plan in such a densely populated or developed area. The council recently updated the city's lot coverage code, requiring more space in the front of new homes for vegetation and reducing the footprint of most new homes. The council also updated the comprehensive plan, which sets goals and objectives for how the city will grow into the future. The Comp Plan update is a multi-year process that the community was invited to participate in numerous times, and I'm glad to see several folks here in the room who participated in that process. Included in the comprehensive plan was direction to write an urban forestry management plan, which will better sync up the city's various goals related to managing an urban forest. This plan is being written and reviewed at the Planning Commission right now. Also under review are the new public work standards, which the council has been discussing and on which a public hearing will be held on October 18th. These standards are at the heart of the so-called problem related to variance requests at the city, and will, we hope, go a long way to addressing the community's concerns. For good or bad, these code changes are similar to the Tree Ordinance in that none of the developments under construction- developments under construction today will be affected, have been or will be affected by these new codes since they are vested to the former rules. Similarly, if the council were to adopt a moratorium today, none of the projects currently under construction or with a vested complete application would be affected by the moratorium. The council has already done much to address the community's concerns over the last 18 months, and there is certainly more to be done through the formalized process. If the council is considering a moratorium on development, what code or codes should be addressed during the time a moratorium is in place? What are your findings of fact and what would it take to cure the moratorium? All in my comments there. We strongly urge you to put a moratorium on the discussion of a moratorium. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David.
I have a question for David.
I want to clarify one point that David made with regards to the $94 million that's sitting on our transportation improvement plan because I think it's misleading to think that the city is going to necessarily spend that $94 million in the next six years. That document is a planning document. It does not mean that all of those projects will be done. I would point to Issaquah Pine Lake Road, which has been sitting on our TIP since 2003.
Okay. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah. David, as you know, Issaquah has adopted a moratorium. Originally, it was comprehensive across the city. It had quite a few extensions and exemptions that had been put into that. While no decision has been taken and while the public input is going to be commencing in October, I understand that there is already words of dramatically reducing that further to the central Issaquah area. Is that what you're also hearing? Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council?
Don, I have one comment as a follow-up to Kristi.
Okay, Tom.
Regarding Councilmember Malchow's remarks a few minutes ago.
Speak a little louder.
Regarding Councilmembers Malchow's comments a few minutes ago, yes, we do have $94 million on the TIP. There is probably that much more in the way of projects behind it. Projects that are started in the next six years will not be finished in the next six years, but they'll be a long way along. We can accelerate them if we wish to, but the reason they are scheduled the way they are is to try to keep away from the debt market as much as we can. Now, should the council decide to change that policy, some, in fact, a good number of these projects can likely be accelerated. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Go ahead.
My name is Carrick Edwards, 2809 204th Avenue Southeast. I live here. I've got two kids at Creekside, a daughter at Pine Lake Middle School. I also work for a builder-to-developer. We've done a few developments in Simamish, several in Issaquah. I can speak firsthand to how long it took to gain momentum to justify the investment in the Town Center. We don't have any, our company doesn't have any investments in the Town Center. It's not our bread and butter, but I can tell you from a return on investment perspective, you finally have the momentum to get things going. And I sense that there's consideration of this moratorium that, well, we just put things on pause and if we want to hit the play button again, everything will go back to where it was. These markets don't last forever and there's quite often unintended consequences of actions. And if you hit the pause button and you come back to hit play later, things may not pick up where you left off and you may be considering other types of incentives to, you know, find a way to fill the vacant commercial space, retail space, other spaces in the Town Center or partially built projects. You may have concrete sitting there idle because you decided to think about things at the wrong time and you missed your window. You have the momentum. If you did the plan right and you believe in the plan, you should let it go. I think the moratorium would be a bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Huckabee?
I just wanted to add a comment to what Tom Odell said on the phone about trying to stay away from the debt markets, but also if we speeded up the projects and we did our major projects at the same time, we would all have to stay at home because we could not possibly do Sahale, Issaquah Pine Lake Road, Snake Hill, and all the other projects that we need to have done at the same time. So we have to stage them out so there's a way for our citizens to get in and out of the city.
Yeah, good point.
Great point, Kathy.
Redmond's having a little bit of that problem right now. Okay. Again, is there anybody else that would like to address the council? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Next is the consent calendar. And do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
It's been moved in seconds. The calendar contains these items. Payroll for the period ending August 31st. Approval of claims for the period ending September 20th. A resolution of the city of Simamish granting final plat approval to the plat of Laurel Park. That's Resolution 2016-694. A resolution of the city of Simamish amending Resolution 2015-655. And the city's master fee schedule, which is Resolution 2016-695. And I will say that the Parks Commission and the Finance Committee spent a lot of time looking at the fee schedule and did a great job on that. Item four is a contract with City Builders Fire Protection Service. Item five is a contract for Simamish Landing Completion Phase Design with HDR Engineering. Item six is amendment to the Storm and Surface Water Management Comprehensive Plan Update with Windward Environment. The proclamation, item seven for national diaper awareness, which we were reported on. Number eight is a proclamation of Welcome America. And this has to do with immigrants and refugees and welcoming them into America and into our city. Item nine is approval of the minutes for September 6th regular meeting. And item 10 is approval of the notes for September 13th study session. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Thank you. By your vote of 7-0, the consent calendar is approved.
Can we take a little break now?
Okay, let's take a five-minute break now.
Thank you, Kathy.
Okay, next item is item number 11, which is a resolution of the city of Simamish approving and confirming a special assessment role for the Beaver Lake Management District Number One. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have tonight with us to lead us with a brief overview of this public hearing and associated resolution, Jeff Thomas from Community Development Department. And we have David Goodman also from that department. So gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, council. Short presentation. This is the last step in the almost year-long process that was outlined for you in December of last year when you initiated the renewal of the Beaver Lake Management District. And tonight, we're affirming the assessment role. You will see in front of your paperwork we distributed during the break, a revised motion, if you're so inclined, to approve this tonight. And at the end of David's short presentation here, I will walk you through that motion, what it means and why.
Good evening, council. Tonight, I'm just going to briefly go over where you have been in terms of this journey on renewing and continuing the Beaver Lake Management District. I'm going to do a quick summary of the assessment role that you'll be approving and we'll open a public hearing to hear any comments on the assessment role and then there's a resolution confirming the assessment role as well. So as Jeff mentioned, starting in, this process started last December. In April, there was a public hearing and resolution submitting the question to the people within the Beaver Lake Management District. In May, they were mailed ballots from City Hall. June, the votes were tallied. Simple majority was required to create the district again. We received 77% in favor, 23% against. Two weeks ago, there was an ordinance renewing and continuing the district, recognizing those results. Tonight, there is the public hearing and adoption of the special assessment role. And then the final step is to appoint a new Management District Advisory Board in January. So just a very brief overview of the assessment role. Those are properties that are on Beaver Lake and they will be assessed $306 per year. And those are in red and in the blue are the Zone 2, which are part of the Greater Lake Management Area and they will be assessed $31 per year. And contiguous lots that are under common ownership will only be assessed once, so anybody who has more than one lot that is next to each other won't be assessed twice.
Okay, great. And then, can you go back a slide, actually? We're going to take a look at this map here for just a second. What we, it was through public comment, actually, written public comment that the city received. There was a discrepancy pointed out between the actual boundary of the Beaver Lake Management District that was drawn a number of years ago by King County and the actual Beaver Lake basin itself. So if you look, can you take the mouse? David's going to point to it here with the mouse a little further up to the right. Okay, so there's a little slice of lots in Trossack 7, I believe, that what happened was when the district boundary was formed, originally drawn out in 2001, I believe, that parcel, Trossack 7, was just in its original parent parcel form. So it was partially in the Beaver Lake Basin and partially out. So it went into the boundary. Well, it stayed like that, but then as lots developed over time, most likely during the last 10 years, you'll recall the Beaver Lake Management District is for 10 years. Now there's parcels that had been subdivided, built on, and are now out of the actual basin itself. So the motion that we included with your agenda bill in the staff report was to recommend approval of the proposed resolution, approving and confirming the special assessment role for Beaver Lake Management District Number One. What we've put in front of you on that single piece of paper that has a yellow highlight, revised motion, would be to simply add to that as amended to only include those properties in the city of Simamish, which are wholly or partially within the Beaver Lake Basin boundary. So then that will, in effect, exclude any of those parcels that are actually outside of the basin, but within the drawn boundary that's been presented to council and used through this process. So unless there's any questions on that, we'll turn it back over to the mayor to open the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for staff? Councilmember Hornish?
How many parcels would that be?
It's not, it's, I believe it's in the vicinity of about 12 and 15.
Okay, so the, no material impact on the amount of money that the district would need. Okay, thank you.
They'd all be Zone 2 properties.
Yeah, so it's a smaller amount. One clarification I'd like to make is that there has been public testimony submitted electronically as well as by mail, and those have been entered into the record as well. Council has received copies of those.
Okay, good. No other questions for staff, then I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. I do have someone that signed up on it, I'm not sure, Denise Darnell? I think she spoke earlier in public comment. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council on this? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. So I would entertain a motion and you might make the motion including the amended terms here.
I would move that we approve the proposed resolution approving and confirming the special assessment role for Beaver Lake Management District Number One as amended to only include those properties in the city of Simamish, which are wholly or partially within the Beaver Lake Basin boundary.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
By your vote of 7-0, it is approved.
Thank you. I think that makes sense.
We're all done with that one. And that was Resolution Number 2016-696. Now we go to item 12, the 2017-18 biennial budget overview. Right, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. We're having some staff is setting up right now, but I'd like to say that we're taking a bit of a different approach from what we've done in the past as far as initial budget presentations. And I'd like to thank the Finance Committee for their work with us as staff to try to raise things up a level or several levels so that we are talking more about concepts and work plans and things to be accomplished rather than line item by line item that would actually probably put most of the people in this audience to sleep. So we'll try to make this a little more interesting than some of the items that we've done in the past. But I've also got assistance tonight from our Finance Director, Aaron Anton, and our Deputy City Manager, Jesse Bond. So are we ready to go? Fantastic. So tonight essentially is a handoff to the city council. This is your first look at the preliminary budget. And this is my recommended city budget to council. So tonight, we're going to do this introduction. We're going to look at the overview of the process. We're going to actually get into the 2017-18 proposed budget. And we're going to keep it at a fairly high level and include the fund overview by different fund types as well as by major funds. Look at the ending fund balances. Basically, the ending fund balance is how much money's left in the bank after we anticipate spending notes. And then any changes basically from 2016 going forward. It's a good way to look at the budget. We're also going to look at the major 17, 18 work plan items and then discuss with council our next steps. So we've done a lot of pre-work through this budget process. As you know, we have a biennial budget. And so immediately after 2016 ended, for all practical purposes, we started preparing for this budget. And the council got their first input into this budget at the council retreat. We worked with them on looking at the priorities that they had for continuing 2016 as well as going into 17 and 18. So the council generally takes a very long-term approach to work plan items. We've got a lot of long-term studies and a lot of long-term goals in mind. So included in that work plan this year was the adoption of the six-year capital plans. That included the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Plan, the Parks Capital Plan, and the Surface Water Capital Plan. Those were adopted by the council in June of 2016. After that, shortly after that, we prepared a revenue forecast and that was complete in July of 2016. Finance Department, in conjunction with some of the other departments, look at what's going on with the economy, what's going on with work with units projected. We touch base with a variety of other sources as well and do a revenue forecast. Then basically, we talk to the departments. We look at the departments and basically ask the question, based on your work plan and work activities, do you have enough resource to basically move forward with what you want to accomplish? So they've submitted their inputs to finance, to me, and we've entertained potential changes in staffing and resource needs. So then throughout this whole process, we basically have ongoing budget monitoring. It's called the Financial Management Report, otherwise referred to as our monthly FMRs. All department heads get that, city council gets that, et cetera. And so essentially, it's a budget to actual that provides us with input on how we're doing going forward. So these are the critical budget deadlines that we have going this year. Coming October 1st, we have by RCW that the draft budget must be filed with the city clerk. October 31st, there's also a requirement by state law that the city manager file their preliminary budget for council consideration by that point. So that will be scheduled two weeks prior to the November 1st public hearing. Then on November 1st, we need to have a hearing on the budget and the property tax, as is also set forth in state law. County also impacts us on their requirements in that by November 30th, we have a submittal deadline for the 2017 property tax levy for King County. And then finally, on December 1st, King County also has a submittal deadline for collection of the stormwater fee. So if there are any changes to the stormwater fee, we need to let the county know by December 1st for the 2017 billing cycle year. So this is your budget calendar as it relates to the council. What has happened through -- we had several meetings throughout August and September with the Finance Committee where we have essentially taken their input to heart, tried to streamline this, and basically honed it down to something that is probably a little bit less in detail than what we started with. So then, tonight is September 20th, this is a preliminary budget presentation, and we are going to ask that any budget questions related to the detail and any comments that you might have, additional needs for information, that you ask staff, particularly direct them to Erin Anton, our Finance Director, by Monday, October 3rd, and then we will address those and bring forth any details that you would like to see at the study session on October 11th. Then again, on November 1st, we'll have a public hearing and the first reading of the adoption of the budget. And November 15th is the second reading and adoption. We've got a little bit of time in there that we could play with. It's a -- but it's a good schedule, and we should be able to meet those. Okay, November 1st, which is the first public hearing and the first reading, it's going to be a very busy night. We're going to have the first reading of the property tax ordinance as well as the first public hearing. We will have the 2017 Salary Schedule Resolution prepared for council. And in addition, we will ask council if they would like to set the 2017 Employee Medical Contribution Resolution. As you know, we have a wellness program at the city, and through our medical insurance provider, there's a 2% fee or reduction to our fees based on the fact that we are a well-city and do things in that regard. In the past, council has basically put that back and given that back to reduce the employees' contributions to that plan. 2017 Fee Schedule Resolution will be adopted also on November 1st. You took the first step at that tonight when you looked at the facility fee schedule, and that will be included. The other fees will be brought forth in this particular resolution outside of what you passed tonight. And then 2017, there will be a conversation related to a stormwater fee increase, and we will go over that in greater detail. November 15th, second reading and adoption of the ordinances listed above on November So essentially, the preliminary budget for the next biennium provides the financial framework to achieve the desired work plan results within the specified budget limitations that the City Council adopts into law. So basically, what this is saying is that the budget is the mechanism by which you achieve the results that has been set forth for council to -- or for council as well as staff to achieve over the next biennium. So without further ado, at this point, I'd like to turn things over to Erin Anton, our Finance Director, to walk us through our financial operating principles and carry us forward.
All right, so these are the operating principles that the city has been using and are in place, and those continue throughout this budget proposal and budget year. So prudent financial management, maintaining the core staffing levels and optimizing contracted services, that's also referred to as the make-buy decision, managing the operating budget at sustainable levels. We have the principle of development pays for their fair share of growth. The operating surplus is treated as one-time money, and we forecast long-term impacts of short-term funding decisions and responsible use of debt. As an illustration of how that occurs is this graphic looks at the core staffing level. So as the workload flexes over time, we staff at a core level, we have core contracted staffing, and then there's supplemental staffing and contracts that have been flow with those different workload surges and demands. So then in getting into the numbers themselves, I wanted to start with just an overall comparison note on our budget numbers. You have as your handout that there's three bienniums worth of data, 13, 14, 15, 16 biennium, and 17, 18. We're looking specifically at the 16 to 17 period because of the major change that took place in 16 due to the Kohani area annexation. And so that's why our focus of the variance analysis is on that from 16 to 17, 18 budget Overall, for revenues, this budget again includes no new taxes, and specifically no BNO tax and no utility tax. It also does not have the allowable 1% increase in the property tax rate. It has the continuation of the stormwater fee rate increase of 2.5%. That was part of that study done years ago throughout -- so that's in place throughout this period. The capital forecast remains consistent with what council saw in adopting in June timeframe when they were looking at the difference, capital improvement plans. Development-related revenue is based on the revenue unit forecast, so the units that are coming through the door, and the forecast of those going forward throughout the budget period. And then the default inflationary provision that's a part of the master fee schedule is the 1.8%, so it's tied to Consumer Price Index for the urban area, and that was the 1.8%. And so you'll see that reflected in the master fee schedule. On the expenditure side, the total amount of non-maintenance positions that were proposed in the budget here are 8.75 full-time equivalents. And we'll go into much more detail on that and the maintenance positions later as we get into the workload. There was also increases in professional service contracts, keeping in line to meet those service demands that are currently in place. There was increased resources for the Maintenance and Operations Division. That was based on recommendations from an analysis that was done, provided to council. And again, just a reminder on capital plans, the first two years of those capital plans that were adopted in June are being included in the budget. And the only two exceptions to that is there was a project added for the flashing yellow turn signal to the Transportation Improvement Plan at $225,000 per year. So that project was added, and the Simamish Landing, 1 million in 2017. So if you're looking at the CIP and you're looking at the first two years, those will match the budget proposal with these two exceptions. So in trying to look at the overall framework for how the budget is structured, the city budget has 11 different funds. So this is the fund structure, and is attempting to illustrate how those different funds are grouped or categorized. So the first category would be the Debt Service Fund. So we'll cover that pretty quickly. It's pretty straightforward. The other types of funds are the Capital Funds. You'll see those grouped in white there. And then the -- all the other funds that contain up to our 11 total funds are included are called the Operating Funds. So looking at the Debt Service Fund, in total summary first, you can see this is basically just paying the debt service related to the Public Works Trust Fund loan, and that will continue throughout the 17, 18 period. So it's just the revenues in the door are paying for the expenditures out on that. So it's the servicing of that loan. Just a reminder, that loan is at an interest rate of 0.5%. So this is a long-term loan. The loan does go through 2021. So this is the only slide on Debt Service because there's not a lot of story here on this one. So moving into the Capital Funds, so that includes those funds that identify there in this illustration, the 301, 302, 340, and 438. We're going to look at the total sum dollars of those capital funds. On the revenue side, we're looking at the variance between 2016 and 2017, and then 2018. So it shows you all three years' total revenues in that category, and then it's noting the major drivers. So this is the template we're going to use as we go through the categories of funds. So major drivers of revenue on the capital side are the fluctuation of grant revenues as those coincide with the different projects throughout those three-year periods. There was an increase in impact fees and real estate excise tax, so that's the REIT portion there on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, the increase from 16 to 17, and then it decreases in 18. So as those go up and down, that's the timing of capital projects flowing throughout those annual periods during that biennial budget. We've also added the Ending Fund Balance. So this is a key analytic metric that we use for the end of the planning term, so 2018, the end of the day, through this -- through these capital funds, has a total ending fund balance of $3 million. Additional note there, the 301 Capital Fund is for general capital purposes, so that was not included as part of those six-year plans that were discussed earlier in the June action. So we've covered debt and capital. We'll get into operating funds. Wanted to show you what the sum total of all operations looks like. So this is a very busy slide, but it has all the numbers to come back to in reference, and certainly we can do that for those online as well. In total, you're noting the increase from 16 to 17, 13.8%, and then it decreases the next year. So your operating funds will also have some variability in them based on mainly the professional services or major projects occurring in one period like 2017 that are not continuing in the 2018 period. So you've budgeted for it in a single year, and that particular contract doesn't continue into the 18 period. So we're going to go into more detail on all of these things, but this is just the summary look. We also wanted to illustrate, just from a distribution standpoint, the percentage -- this is by department now of those operating funds. So each department has a share of the total operating budget. This is illustrating which departments have which shares. It's just a different look on those numbers. So now we're going to go into each of the operating funds individually, so you can see those discrete changes. So starting with the General Fund. In revenues, we're looking at a 6.4% increase in 17 and a 1.4% increase in 18. Primary drivers of that, property taxes, as we're adding and updating the levy, reconciling basically the Kohani in there, and then new development revenues coming throughout that period as well. On the expenditure side, major drivers are increased transfers to the capital projects, and that was again part of that adopted capital funding plan. Increased professional services, and there is new staffing that we mentioned earlier. You'll see that in the numbers here and in more detail later. Also included are increases in the police and fire contract throughout that budget period, 17, 18. You'll note at the end of 18, again, our key analytic there, Ending Fund Balance is 6.4 million, so still a healthy Ending Fund Balance at the end of the 2018 period. Going along to the Street Fund next, this is where the overlay program, street maintenance and repair, again, the variance there in the first year on revenues, you're basically just seeing the fluctuation of transfers that this is pulling in in order to meet the operating needs that continue throughout the period. On the expenditure side, there was an increase of the traffic engineer. There was increased maintenance and transportation planning as well. Ending Fund Balance here, 6.7 million for the year-end 2018 position.
And I will point out that--
Go back one.
I will point out to council that the overlay expenditures are in this particular item, and we're spending about $7.8 million in the Street Fund. King County's overlay program for next year for the whole county, from what I understand, is going to be close to 3 million. So we're spending approximately double what King County is.
We're spending 7.8 for the biennium?
No.
7.8 in 2017.
I didn't realize--
Four years.
Or, excuse me, is that? Oh, 3.5 a year, I'm sorry. So we're spending 3.5 a year versus King County's 3 per year. My apologies.
This chart says 7.6 for 18.
That's the total. That's the total. That is not -- that is just not the overlay.
Okay.
It's just part of that.
Okay, so moving on to the Surface Water Management Fund. This is the operating side of the Surface Water. And the total picture there is we're updating 2017 for reconciling Kohani contribution, and then the rate increase rolling through on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, you show an increased transfer to the Surface Water Management Capital Fund. That's a high percentage because basically you're increasing the transfer over to eliminate the inter-fund loan. So you may recall that change, that we're trying to use the operating and increased transfer from the operating to eliminate the need of an inter-fund loan in the capital side. There's also an increase here due to National Pollution, NPDES requirements and programs. I'll use the acronym.
National Pollution Discharge Elimination--
--System.
Thanks, Tom.
Finance uses different acronyms.
Yes, that's right. So again, the Ending Fund Balance in total here on the operating side, 700,000 is the rounded number. Moving on to the Internal Service Funds category, so this includes the Risk Management, the Information Technology, and the Fleet Fund. So all three of those grouped together, total revenues are increasing as increased transfers need to occur in order to pay for the assets that are being replaced, for the increased insurance premiums that are being charged to cover the new assets. And so that's built in on the expenditure side, the asset purchases, and the increased transfers on the revenue side. Again, at the end of the 2018 period, we're looking at a fund balance of 1.4 million for this category. So wanted to provide a bit more line item detail on the -- or fund-level detail when we're looking at each of the Ending Fund Balances. So you can see this graphic shows of the Capital Funds and the Operating Funds. Here it is for each one of the specific funds, totaling a total 2018 Ending Fund Balance budgeted at 18.1 million. So you can look through that and see the different amounts for the different particular funds and the purposes therein. So wanted to highlight, when we're looking at the Ending Fund Balance, for the General Fund specifically, we had a 10% strategic reserve target, and that would equate to 4.22 million. You'll note from the prior slide, the Ending Fund Balance is 6.35 million, so we're at 15.8%, and that's above our strategic target. Also wanted to note as part of this, as the policy comes forward, the Eastside Fire and Rescue has an emergency reserve policy target in discussion there. This is a -- if you were to set aside 10% of the partner operating contribution, that would equate to 714,000. So it's intended to illustrate that your difference between the 4.22 million and the 6.35 still has enough to cover the 714,000 if that earmark is made. And I'm going to turn it over to Jesse for the work plan items here.
Thank you, Erin. So as Lyman mentioned, as we started the presentation, in years past, we have done department budget reports that have spanned, I don't know, three or four council meetings, and we've gone line item by line item. So we asked the Finance Committee, do you want to do that this year? And they said, no, we don't want to do that. So our slightly revised strategy is to spend some time tonight sharing with you what all those numbers mean and what the work program looks like. When we come back on the 11th, the department directors will all be here and be prepared, excuse me, to present a modified department presentation, but we really-- excuse me, to present a modified department presentation, but we really want to focus on the areas you want to focus on. If you want to talk about the finance supply budget, by all means, we can talk about it, but I'm guessing that may not be your highest priority. So, tonight, I'm going to run through major work plan items. It's certainly not everything, but hopefully get you thinking about what's there, if it's supported, and what else we might need to be looking at. So, my theme, you'll see this in many of my slides, we are anticipating a very high volume of work in the next biennium across all departments. We have proposed a number of new staff positions, and I'll walk you through those in just a minute, to meet those work plan goals. We've already begun implementing some new programs and strategies based on recent studies. So emergency management, we did a gap analysis this year, and we're well underway with our Maintenance and Operations Division analysis as well. We have more operations work to do and more things to study, and I've got a slide at the end to talk about that. I think this biennium is going to be about prioritization, because the workload is high, and it, we don't have a lot of room to take on anything beyond what's already here. So, starting with the general fund, just some highlights, the City Council Department. I said we should buy you a helicopter, but Lyman said no, so that's not in the budget. We did have an earlier request this year for some communications-focused items, particularly a citywide communication strategy. So I wanted to let you know that's in the Council Department budget. We've set aside $10,000 for consulting support. You also notice some new things, a new item, social media management. I'm not sure that's been in our budget previously. That covers a $2,000 a month contract with somebody that's Sarah Kimsey. Many of you know her, is overseeing our social media accounts. And also about $5,000 annually for records retention for social media. Community survey is programmed every other year in the even years, so your council budget does include funding for a community survey. I was asked earlier today if we're planning to do a community survey in 2016, and I do know that Tim Larson is beginning to work on that. This is just a highlight. I'm not going to go through every component of each department budget, but this is something new in the City Council Department budget. Administrative Services Department, several changes here. I asked, first of all, I asked Melanie for a picture. She didn't give me one, so I had to go find a cartoon of Melanie in action. So the City Clerk's Office is a part of the Administrative Services Department, and certainly responsible for all the records of the city. I would say lead is here tonight. Our deputy city clerk, she would confirm that they're still facing a very high volume of work. We evaluated this team, and we identified additional resources needed for records management. This is everything, all of our files, records, everything, and it's volumes now. Public records requests, we continue to receive a large number of public records requests. We just got one today for all of the files on the community center project. And supporting council committees. So, we currently have administrative assistants across all the departments that are attending council committee meetings and taking minutes. We're not sure that that's the most efficient way to manage the council committees. So all of that rolled up, we're proposing a full-time administrative assistant to join this team to support records management, public records requests, and to take minutes at council committee meetings. Also in the Administrative Services Department is Human Resources. One of the highest priority staff requests for an additional position is for a Human Resources person. We don't have a dedicated HR person. We have a very capable Administrative Services Director who wears about 15 different hats, and we have an administrative assistant who splits her time between HR and Public Works. But as you can imagine, with the size of our staff, we need some more horsepower when it comes to human resources support. In addition to just hiring and managing the staff, we have some critical work items that are on our plate. Personnel Policy Manual update, which is actually a pretty major update. The Classification and Compensation Study, I'm going to talk about that in a minute. Implementing a Human Resources Information System. We don't have any of our HR stuff, if you will, in a software platform. It's all in paper files. So when you, as a city councilor, are asking for things like lists of staff positions, you're actually getting that from our payroll system, not from an HR system. And there is certainly a better way to do business. And the other piece is implementation of a citywide staff training program. This has been on our plate for years, and we'd really like to get it going, so our staff can participate in trainings that are hosted here versus always having to travel out for training. We are proposing a new position. It's a full-time Human Resources Analyst to support this work. One thing I wanted to touch on, just because I don't think we've talked about it a whole lot with the full council, is we are due for a Classification and Compensation Study. The last one was done in 2007, typically includes a market analysis of all the staff salaries. We will also be looking at exempt versus non-exempt status of positions. We have positions that need to be evaluated. We will take a look at the classification structure. That's our nine-step classification plan and all the associated grades. We did a lot of work on this in 2007. It may not change much, but we will look at it. The big lift here, I'll be candid, is having somebody come in and rework our job descriptions. They've, they need some work for consistency. So the outcomes of the classification study, if any, would potentially be considered during your mid-biennial budget update. But we've set aside $100,000 in the Administrative Services Department budget to do this work. This is pretty heavy consultant work. Moving on, and by the way, I did put the page numbers on here, and I jump around a little bit, but Emergency Management Department, page 17. So the first thing I'll share is the Emergency Management Department didn't exist in your budget last time. This is a new budget department. It's not a literal department. Emergency Management is part of the City Manager's Office. But the department budgets allow us to classify, like, things together. So you may recall, we completed a gap analysis earlier this year that helped inform this budget recommendation. I think the main outcome, there were many, is we have a lot of work to do, and this is a very staff-intensive work program. So we are proposing to add a full-time Emergency Manager. I think we've talked about that with the council previously. Some other items I'd just like to call out. We have a really great opportunity to partner with Sammamish Plateau Water for a shared position. They currently have a person that's doing emergency management, and we're proposing to, and they're proposing, I guess we're supporting, sharing that position for education and outreach, which is a significant component of emergency management. Those details are still being worked out, but we have budgeted about $65,000 annually for that shared position. We also put into the budget $25,000 annually for supplemental services. So this is, if we need a consultant, we're doing some catch-up right now, candidly, so we have consultant resources if they're needed. We do have a consultant working for us right now in emergency management. One other thing to highlight is the Sammamish Citizen Corps partnership was previously in the non-department budget. It is now under the Emergency Management Department. The work plan, I'm not going to read this slide. We've been over this list before. We have a very staff-intensive work plan in emergency management, and we are doing a little bit of catch-up. But I'm proud to say we're on track, and we certainly appreciate the city council support, and we've been working closely with the Public Safety Committee, who's also been great. Some of these items, like the Emergency Management Ordinance, will touch the city council, so it's something to flag for your work plan as we go forward. Jumping topics completely, the Social and Human Services Department. This department does exist in your budget. It's been enhanced a little bit. And what I mean by that is we moved the Community Services Coordinator position, that's Allison Gubata's position, from the Parks Department budget to the Human Services Department budget. She's dedicated nearly 100% to this line of business. When her position was initially created, it was a halftime position, and earlier this year, the council approved increasing that to support the Human Services Task Force. So this budget reflects that increase. She's now at a total of 0.75 or 3/4 time. A couple of things to note, I have a little yellow star on the slide. This is because I'm pretty sure this is something you're going to want to talk about on October 11th. The Human Services Grant funding levels are proposed at $240,000 annually. That's pretty much carry forward from the previous biennium, no increase. We have plugged in about $100,000 for consulting support for a variety of items, one of which may be a Human Services Needs Assessment. And then the Arch Trust Fund is budgeted at $100,000 annual contribution. Worth mentioning, I have some Human Services Committee folks here tonight. The next Human Services Committee meeting will be a joint meeting with the task force, and I think the committee and the citizen task force are going to talk about the recommendation on all of these items. What we know preliminarily is the task force is recommending a Human Services Needs Assessment. I think both the committee and the task force have talked a lot about the grant program analysis, the work we need to do going forward this year. And from there, we also, it sounds like we need to talk about forming a Human Services Commission. And once we roll all of that up, I think sometime in 17, we'll be talking about the work plan long-term and what the staffing impacts are. So we're not quite there yet, but this is what the picture looks like. So we're planning to come back on the 11th and talk about this. We've already identified that. Police Services. Just a quick reminder, we contract with the Sheriff's Office, King County Sheriff's Office, for police services. Traffic enforcement was identified as a high priority for this budget. At the bottom, I've noted, we did add one new traffic enforcement officer to the budget. It's a single shift. A couple other things, I've had a chance to meet with the new police chief a couple times that we'll be working on, is basically an operations analysis for police services. It's probably time to talk about whether or not moving to a precinct-based model makes sense. We also need to look at the build-out of town center and other, certainly, ways in which growth is impacting our police services. I'm really excited, our police chief has an absolute passion for community outreach and has visions for growing our volunteer program. So I think you'll see some changes in that regard in the coming years as well. Facilities, so I'm going to switch gears entirely and talk facilities, parks, and public works, so maintenance, operations, capital. You have a facilities department. It is the team, two FTEs, and the work program for all of your leased and owned buildings. So this is the team that's overseeing your capital projects and your maintenance. One of their major work plan items, our major work plan items is space planning, new staff, existing staff, and I'll talk about that more in a minute. Also, Erin and I got together today and decided that since you guys enjoyed capital planning so much, we were going to add a couple more six-year capital plans to your list, one of them being the facilities capital plan. So in the coming year, we plan to put together a six-year facility CIP. That's for all your buildings. It's going to be a fun year with capital planning. I'm not going to dive into facility maintenance a whole lot. There's another presentation tonight on maintenance. But in this department, we are proposing to add a full-time facility maintenance supervisor. There's currently one maintenance worker, two. And Sev DeBruyn is our project manager. She's also budgeted in this department. Public Works. These slides are a little bit brief, but keep in mind, Public Works spans multiple funds and work areas. Speaking of that, I just said that their work plan items overlap, Streets Fund, Surface Water Fund, and the capital funds. This department is very, very busy with capital projects, plans, and development review. Speaking of plans, Public Works is the lead department on the multi-modal, we need a new name, it's so hard to say, transportation plan that will be probably out for consultant selection at the end of 17, and we'll be looking at that in 18 and likely into 19. They're working on the Transportation Comp Plan update and the Associated Impact Fee update. And then Public Works will also be the lead on the ADA Transition Plan, that's a 17, 18 project. We don't do any planning in isolation, so I've identified the other three plans that they're participating in, with both town center planning and the non-motorized transportation plan being very significant. Moving on to Parks and Recreation. Again, another department that's very busy. What I've described is a post-community center catch-up effect in the Parks and Recreation Department. For two to three years, the staff were really focused on that one major project. Now that it's wrapping up, everything else is moving back onto the plate, capital projects and major plans. Again, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on maintenance right now. We have another presentation tonight. But I will highlight growth of the volunteer programs, and it's going to be a high priority for Parks, particularly in coordination with Public Works and Police, as both of those areas are interested in growing volunteers. And Parks is very busy with special events and ongoing partnerships, as you know. New positions for the Parks and Recreation Department are all except one on the maintenance side of the house, a new lead maintenance worker in Parks, and again, we'll talk more about this later, six new maintenance worker ones. And I didn't call out all the interns in this presentation, but I wanted to call this position out. We've added a six-month intern to the Parks Department to support the volunteers that are interested in working on stormwater projects. LB is our solo volunteer coordinator, and she's very busy with a full load of projects, so we're hoping an intern can step in and help pick up in that area. We have eliminated a number of positions as well, all on the maintenance side, an FTE maintenance worker, too. That was actually a position converted to the lead maintenance worker. Eight and a half, nine-month seasonal positions, and two four-month seasonal positions have been eliminated. The half that's remaining here and in Streets is to continue to support somebody that's doing contract management for us on the maintenance side of the house. Major plans, you'll start to see a trend here. We have a lot of major plans on our plate. The Parks Department is the lead on the non-motorized transportation plan. We're actually out for RFP right now. They are also leading the land acquisition strategy, and they will be leading the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan update. I know you're asking, "Didn't we just adopt this?" This is a plan that has to be adopted every six years to remain eligible for state grants. Your new Parks Director has a lot of experience with grants, more so than the other one you got rid of. So you're going to be in good hands with the grant program going forward. Other plans, Parks is certainly involved in town center planning, the Urban Forestry Management Plan, and ADA Transition Plan as well. Community Development, I think really they take the cake in terms of being the busiest department going into the biennium. They're just doing a lot of work across many lines of business. We are adding, proposing to add a number of new positions to this department, a full-time Senior Code Compliance Officer. We currently have one code compliance officer, and there's definitely a need for a second. We previously presented to the council on the Electrical Inspector Program. So we collect fees for electrical inspections, so I will say this is nearly a neutral budget item. The Senior Permit Technician, half of that position is to support the electrical inspector work. The other half of the Senior Permit Technician is actually to take on the right-of-way permits that are currently done by Public Works. There will be a test later, expect you to remember all those details. Finally, we're proposing to add an office assistant, half-time, to the front desk. Our front desk at City Hall is currently staffed by one and a half FTEs, which, if you can imagine, that's not quite enough when you have high volume and vacations and sick leave and meetings and things like that. This is an oldie but goodie photo, so I just had to throw it in. That was a former Planning Commissioner Keller, I think, all the way back when we were maybe at old City Hall. I was looking for pictures last night, and I ran across this, so it had to go into the presentation.
Is it dark here?
Different air color. So Community Development is the lead department, certainly on the town center planning effort, the Urban Forestry Management Plan, and comprehensive plan updates. You know, the one thing I wanted to mention about Community Development is everything we do in all the other departments goes through Community Development, all the plans, all the capital projects. So this department really gets hit from all directions, and they're really supportive and great to work with. Thanks, Jeff. The non-department department, say that three times fast, this is other. I just wanted to point out, this is an area that we program for a variety of citywide programs and services. So you'll see in this department, election costs, our citywide partnerships, arch membership, and a number of other things. What you also see in this department, and the reason I put this slide together, is this is where the town center planning is funded from. It's under the subcategory Economic Development, and also the ADA Transition Plan is in this department. department. That's because these planning efforts touch so many departments, it doesn't make sense to split all the invoices out, so we just host them here. Street Fund, and we are coming to a close here, I promise. It's a busy, busy team. This is both your street maintenance folks at the Maintenance and Operations Center, and also your engineering staff. Very busy work program, not only dealing with the day-to-day cars and signal operations, but they also oversee the overlay project and other capital projects. We identified traffic management as a high priority work item. And if I go to the next slide, we have proposed a full-time traffic engineer. That's a picture of Stephen barbecuing. He's our current traffic engineer. So I'm thinking the new traffic engineer will also have to have some lunch preparation skills to fit with the team. The other positions are on the maintenance side. We are proposing a street and stormwater maintenance supervisor. Half of the position is here, half is in the storm. A maintenance worker, two. Two maintenance worker ones, and then the elimination of two nine-month seasonal positions and four four-month seasonal positions. Say that all fast. Surface Water Management Fund, this is storm operations. Again, this is a component of both engineering and maintenance. I have a yellow star on this slide. I think if I were to prioritize my next area of focus for, you know, really careful look at operations and staffing, it would be the storm team. They have a very, very high workload and not very many positions. There's also a note here, I think we discussed it at the very bottom. I know as part of the storm comp plan, the council's been talking about a number of work plan changes. For example, in our monitoring program, those changes are not included in this budget. But if you go all the way up to the top where it says implementation of enhanced programming, you remember that chart from your storm comp plan? Everything in there is in your budget. I know that's really probably clear as mud, but we'll be talking about this a little bit more on the 11th. New positions for the storm team, we are adding an associate stormwater engineer. What I want to point out is this is primarily for development review, and we are anticipating one particularly large project coming in, that's the Eastlake-Samamish Trail Phase 2B. Tawnee is not able to manage capital projects, plans, and do development reviews, so this position will be coming in to take a development review off of her plate. The other positions are maintenance-related, the streets and storm supervisor, that's the other half of the position I just talked about, two maintenance worker ones, and then the elimination of two and a half, nine-month seasonals and four four-month seasonal positions. Surface Water Management, they're the lead department on the surface water rate study, the Zakuus Creek Basin Plan, which I believe the way we've calendared that is to be out for consultant selection at the end of '17 and working on the plan in '18. I have a little yellow star by other basin plans, because I do know there's a number of council members that would like to accelerate basin planning. So this is a good time to jump in and say, when we go into the meeting on the 11th, when you send your comments to Erin, it would be great to understand the what? What you want to do differently, what the work program requests are, and we'll come back and propose the how. It will be a mix of staff, consultants, to help achieve your work plan goals. So if basin planning, accelerating basin planning is a priority, we'd love to know that, and we could begin to talk about what the resource levels, what resource levels will need to do that work. The storm team, the very small storm team, is also participating in another, a number of other plans. Those are noted there. The Technology Fund, and I promise we are near the end. This is not only the Technology Replacement Fund, but this is where all of the technology and IT work is housed. So we have, in fact, the slide was about three slides long of all the things they're working on, so I distilled it down. Security and disaster recovery is our number-one priority. We're going to be doing a pretty significant move to the cloud system. Don't ask me to explain that, I just got the picture, put it in. I know it means we're taking all of our data servers and emails offsite. We are continuing to work on the GIS Open Data Initiative and also the GIS Strategic Plan. The website is intended to go live before the end of the year, but content management takes up a significant amount of time for a webmaster. And here's some exciting news. This is your other six-year capital plan that we're going to be bringing forward, so you have five capital plans to look at next year. But this is important, because technology replacement is something that we're doing annually, and we'd like to capture the financial impacts. One final note on IT, we forget about everything they do to keep us running. We're implementing a number of new systems next year. I already talked about the Human Resources Management System. We're implementing a volunteer management system. It's a software program, a new facility scheduling system. Asset management is getting a second look. So they're impacted by all of this, not to mention supporting the new staff and office reconfiguration. You know, everything we do, we count on them, so they're very busy. All right, a couple, and this is brief, the capital plans. One of the funds we haven't talked about previously is the General Capital Improvement Fund. So there it is, one of your capital funds. First of all, this is where your capital contingency reserve is housed. It's 3.5 million for the biennium, I should have noted that. We have also budgeted in '17, $500,000 for City Hall Space Reallocation Project. Little fun tidbit there, if you go up to the second floor, that's Allison. She doesn't have a cubicle, we're out of space, so she sits at what I like to call the timeout desk in the hallway, and we'd like to get her a cubicle.
An expensive cubicle.
We also have several people doubled up in cubicles. So the project, in a nutshell, first of all, the police department is, we're going to reconfigure their cubicles and also replace the carpet. Carpet is at the end of its useful life. They need some more space, which we actually have there, we just need to relay out their workspace, so I'll be working with the new police chief on that. The first floor of City Hall, we are also going to be reconfiguring the cubicles and replacing the carpet while we do it. We do have a number of wear spots. I will note, the carpet replacement on the first floor in police, in the first floor is going to be carpet tiles, like we put upstairs. So the next time we get wear spots, we just take the tile out, we don't have to replace the whole section of carpet. Second floor, this is the space that's adjacent to the King County Sheriff's Office leased area, where we have our Fourth of July VIP area, and we have some fitness equipment and storage. We are proposing to build that area out. We have run out of space in all other areas of the City Hall, so we are going to need to move some staff groups up there. You're wondering who's going to move? We don't know yet, we're working on it.
I wasn't wondering that, I was wondering about the Fourth of July.
I'm sure the new Parks Director will figure that out and let you know what the plan is.
We'll definitely have to take that into consideration. The other thing I was going to mention is, it's amazing how many people around here are essentially hot-bunked into their desks, they're sharing cubicles, et cetera. So I would invite council to walk through City Hall, both upstairs and through the main area. You can see how tight things are these days.
It's a problem.
We, especially in the summer, we didn't have enough seats for interns. And the other thing I'll mention is, as our major road projects, as soon as they're under construction, we'll also be hosting consultant, construction, management teams here, and we don't have anywhere for them to sit right now either. So this is going to be a big project. We need to get this done in '17, hopefully before the summer. Okay, I promise, we are on the home stretch. Capital Funds. Here's your, no, really this time. The good news is, I don't have any updates beyond what Erin already shared. You adopted the plans. The two changes are the flashing yellow lights on 228th, the Samamish Landing Project and the Park CIP in '17. We did remove the stormwater inter-fund loan from the Storm CIP, but if additional programs get added through council direction, we will probably be putting, potentially be putting the inter-fund loan back, so stay tuned. Okay, just a couple recaps. I went through a whole bunch of slides, and I named a number of plans that we'll be working on. This is that whole list rolled up into one slide for '17 and '18. In my time here at the city, I have never seen a biennial work plan with this many plans on the list. So I know, Lyman and I chatted about this today, I think it's going to be really important for us to spend some time, staff and council, to talk about how we work through this list efficiently and effectively. It's going to impact your council calendar, it's certainly going to impact the staff work program. But nearly every single one of the items on this list also includes a robust public process. So this is significant, really significant, and perhaps, I can't remember, one of the committees suggested that we might want to talk about how we manage this at your retreat or an upcoming study session. The staff recap, I went through all those positions on separate slides, so this is a summary of the new staff positions, not including maintenance, across all the departments. As Erin mentioned, it's 8.75 FTEs, plus a contracted position in police. On the maintenance side of the house, the top chart is 13 new FTEs. These are all full-time staff. We did some, you know, rough math in terms of all the seasonal positions we're eliminating. It turns out to be about the equivalent of 13 FTEs. The math is a little bit different, because we are hiring some, proposing to hire some supervisors, and they certainly get paid at a higher grade than a nine-month seasonal. But in terms of the number of people, and positions, excuse me, it's comparable. Position reclassifications, just a quick note, we did have a number of reclassification proposals submitted by department directors. We've deferred nearly all of them to the class comp study, except for two. The maintenance worker one positions, when I did the position analysis, were like the lowest in the market across Washington State. So we proposed reclassifying them, particularly because we're planning to bring on 10 new maintenance worker ones, and we want to be competitive. The other reclassification is one we talked to council about in May. It was taking a senior planner that was formerly Evan Maxim's position and reclassifying to a planning manager for work on the town center. So those are the two reclasses going forward in this budget. The salary schedule, no structural changes. The COLA is 1.7% based on a four-year average. Our new positions that didn't exist, like the emergency manager, have been added to the schedule. And again, I've said this probably four times now, we're working on a class comp study as we head into '17. Really, now, I'm almost at the end. I think just one final note, we have been working hard on a number of areas, continuous process improvements, analyzing our staffing and resource levels, but we have a lot more work to do. Technical staff, you know, we're looking at, do we need more engineers? Do we need more administrative support staff to support the engineers? As we add staff, we got caught in this trap a little bit at the maintenance center. We added a lot of staff, but not enough management staff, so we had, we were sort of out of alignment there. Something that's come up, both at the committee level, and I know on the staff side of the house, is perhaps an opportunity to talk about customer response. We were spending a lot of time, and it's not a bad thing, it's just a function of what's happening, just responding to daily emails and phone calls, and that takes away from getting your work done. So we're eager to talk about best practices and process with the council, so that we can improve in this area and make sure we're resourced appropriately. I've already talked about technology. I put arborist services on here. I didn't have time to go back through all the department budgets, but the new tree ordinance has impacted Public Works, Parks, Storm, and Community Development. We all have arborist contracts, and so at some point, I think we're going to need to look at when it makes sense to have an in-house arborist versus a third-party contracted arborist. And we're always taking a look at project and construction management. My last slide. You already saw this one. So just a reminder, we've given you a lot to think about tonight. You have your actual budget document, you have a copy of this presentation minus that very last slide. We would appreciate your comments and questions into Erin by October 3rd. Erin will be working with the rest of this senior staff team to prepare a presentation and response on October 11. And then certainly, as we head into November, we have a couple meetings scheduled to finalize and adopt your budget. And that concludes the presentation.
Councilmember Huckabee.
Yes, two items. First of all, in that salary review, are you going to be reviewing city council salaries? Next year is an election year, and it would be really important for potential people who are running for city council to understand what the salary schedule is. I understand that ISQ hired somebody, and they did a salary study and came back with an adjustment. So just a thought. The second thing I wanted to make a comment on was that we had a lot of conversation around the surface water, the fee that we charge, and it was very clear that there could be some, based on policy decisions, later this year with regard to the surface water area, that we might have to raise the fee over and above the 2.5%. So when we come back to you with comments, we're doing both the surface water comp plan, where we're talking about monitoring and education. So should the council be responding to you in terms, by October 3rd, in terms of the budget process of what their ideas are in and around additional needs in the surface water area?
Yeah, I think honestly, the program that you would like to see implemented, if you could let us know what that would include, and then we can put together basically a response to that, whether it be consulting help or additional staff assistance, or how we might put that together. That would be helpful to us.
Thank you, and I think a lot of it was when the council went around and looked at some of the LID projects. We recognized the complexities, not only in the engineering, both in-house, in the design, educating the community, monitoring to make sure that the communities were keeping those up. So it seemed to be that there was, we did have a lot of conversation around those issues. So, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Valderrama.
Oh, I'd like to first thank the whole Finance Department for the presentation they're putting together, and particularly you, Lyman, for this new approach of making it more macro, although less is more sometimes. I did notice, Jesse, that you had six gold stars placed there on the priorities, so it's going to be a busy year. I also noticed that you have, as you've laid out, 8.75 full-time employees that are currently being proposed for review for 2017, '18. Now, I'm curious, with the Kohani annexation, we also brought on a bunch of full-time employees, and we also brought on employees for the Community Development Assistant on the planning. How many people did we bring on in 2016? How many full-time employees do we have now?
So we have 90 full-time employees currently in 2016.
Currently, and how many did we bring on last year?
We can follow up and get that answered.
Sorry?
We will follow up on that, we don't have an exact number. I will address the increase in staffing. Essentially, it comes down to the fact that staff is extremely busy. We've heard from the community, as well as council members, that we're not quite hitting the mark these days. We're delayed in getting back to people. We're not being as responsive as we used to be. For example, the traffic enforcement officer, we have one person dedicated to that, and we've heard from the community that in the neighborhood, or in the areas around schools, there are quite a few, shall we say, bad drivers that may be driving a little bit too fast throughout school areas, as well as throughout the community. And this is a response to try to meet that need. So essentially, what we're trying to do is provide a better level of service to the community. We're 62,000 people now, and although we're not quite where some of the other cities are, we have a lot of people that have come into the communities of Samamish after having lived elsewhere, and their expectations, quite honestly, are a little bit higher than what people had experienced while they lived under King County. So staff is struggling a bit to try to keep up with that, and we try very, very hard to be responsive. And so this is our thought of how we do that.
How to address the six gold stars?
That's part of it. Thank you.
Councilmember Keller.
Yeah, just.
Councilmember Keller.
Yeah, just a quick comment. Maybe this will help the staff and the council. But the reason we have council committees really is so that not only can the council be involved with the staff and help, help get the staff work done, but actually work for the council as well. And so I would ask the Finance Committee, with the months that you've spent working on some of these things, if possibly, you could actually give us some guidance, maybe just in key areas that you saw when you were going through the budget. If you could actually give us some notes of some areas that you think we might want to look at to help us in our review afterwards, so we're not just repeating some of the things that you've gone through.
I think Kathy already highlighted the surface water.
Surface water is a key thing in other areas, particularly where we might be looking at more staff, or if anybody has recommendations or wants to have a conversation about moving some of the tip dollars from one place to another. Those are really key things we've been talking about in how we provide services for the community over the next couple of years, so please concentrate on those.
Great, thank you.
If I could jump in for a minute?
Go ahead, Tom.
I agree with Kathy that surface water should definitely be on our radar screen, and I'm a little concerned we're not, despite the addition, we're still not there. Secondly, in the transportation area, having been with Public Works as much as I have lately, I think they're probably running a little, little lead, and we may want to take another look at that in the end. Thirdly, in the Community Development area, this is an area where we're continuing to receive a lot of input from the community, some positive, some not so positive, that as we go through the budget, we may want to think about whether or not that is adequately resourced as well. So money and put on those three areas.
Good input. I think you ought to write those up and remind the council that the comments should go to Erin by Monday, October 3rd. Okay?
Will do.
Jesse, thank you very much.
Are you sure you're doing?
Yes, very clear.
Okay, next, we're on to item 13, policy private property storm and surface water management responsibilities. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, do we want to extend the meeting since we're not going to get it done in five minutes?
You're ready?
Yes.
Yeah, we should extend it at least an hour.
I would suggest 11:30.
11:30?
Oh, let's do 11, please.
You like to repeat these motions?
Yes.
11, and then we'll see.
Then we'll see. I would hope we can get through.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Five-minute break now?
Yeah.
Okay, five-minute break right now. Back in session here.
This next one should be simple.
Yeah.
Okay.
Record keeps getting shorter.
Item 13, Mr. City Manager.
Don't laugh.
Tonight, we have Steve Linishevsky and Cheryl Paston here from Public Works Department. They are here to essentially, for lack of a better term, do a handoff on the discussion as it relates to private property, storm, and surface water management responsibilities. So they're going to give us a brief overview of what has been accomplished thus far and get council input on next steps, and should be very brief.
Okay.
Council and citizens, Steve Linishevsky, Public Works Director. So before you is a draft policy relative to private property, storm, and surface water management responsibilities. There's been a lot of the, a lot of discussion on private versus public and whatnot going on in the last three to four months. So Cheryl has led the effort through the Finance Committee in bringing forward a policy, looking over other agencies' policies, what seemed to be a good fit, what didn't. At this point, this was vetted out several, three times with Finance Committee. With their support, it is very basic, and it is a first blush. We thought it was important to provide in conjunction with at least the budget, because it could have budgetary implications, so the intent was to hand it off. Let you guys review it, read it, and then maybe discuss it at an upcoming meeting. Of course, Cheryl's here to talk a little more detail, and then we'll probably have Kathy as a Finance Committee Chair, just Councilmember Huckabee make a brief statement as well. So maybe if you want to go first, Councilmember Huckabee, and then we can have Cheryl discuss.
I think she does. Go ahead.
Oh, that would be fine. The Finance Committee, through all the discussions we've had with Tamarack, we tried, this is not, this has nothing to do with Tamarack, but the issue that was brought up was how do we deal with stormwater and other issues where we're dealing with private property and private road systems? So we really appreciate the fact that Cheryl did a lot of looking in other communities. And what this basically does is a policy that would give us the option, if appropriate, and several conditions are met, that we could go forward and do stormwater development or other issues where private property is involved. And so rather than going through in detail, because we've got a little bit more to discuss tonight, the three of us have discussed it along with the Public Works Group. I really appreciate what Cheryl has done. She's gotten a lot of information. We are, the three of us are handing it off, recommending that you look at it, we discuss it, and so perhaps we can come back and discuss it along with the budget. In two weeks, if you have questions, send questions by October 3rd, and then we can address it more fully at our next meeting.
Okay, that's a good suggestion to have questions by October 3rd. Into Steve? Or Cheryl?
Sure.
Either.
Either.
Okay. Good. Well, then, why don't we go to the next topic?
Oh, I got a question.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. So I'm trying to understand, on Exhibit 1, the second page, the first full paragraph, last sentence, "The city should consider implementing a program to share the capital costs with the benefiting private property owners if the aforementioned benefits do not significantly outweigh the associated costs." What is the program? What is that meant to be? And what's meant by that sentence?
Could we defer that discussion to the next meeting?
Right.
Could we defer that discussion to the next meeting when we have all the questions, and we could go through it in detail in the interest of keeping this meeting a little bit shorter?
Okay, then, a follow-up question to that then is, what is the policy issue that we're deciding on in this document?
The policy issue is an issue, as you remember, we discussed around Tamarack, whether we could do this or not. And I want to divorce this from Tamarack, because that is not the only place where we might have this situation. And Mike Kenyon had identified the fact that if there was a public benefit, we could do that. But we felt that it was really important to have a more robust policy that we could look at, a policy that gave us more factors to consider as to whether we would do something or not do something, and how we, the approach that we would take in any unique given situation.
Okay. And finally, was it unanimous, the support for this document?
It was unanimous to bring it to the council, yes.
Not sure that's the same, but okay, thank you.
I think we were very pleased with the results that we received. It gives us what we thought was enough latitude and enough conditions to be able to understand and have a sense of direction of how we would analyze a particular situation, of the direction that we would take. So yes, there was unanimous support for that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hornish?
Yeah, just to take that one step further. I mean, it's basically a, I think everybody on the council knows, but for the public to understand, constitutional requirement, no public funds can be spent for private benefit. And that's what we're trying to balance here. When is the public benefit sufficient that we can spend your taxpayers' dollars to help out the public? So just to clarify, and not put words in your mouth, Mr. City Attorney, but it's not just a public benefit, it's a public benefit and the cost is justified. Then we can spend the money. So there's a whole balancing act there, and that's what this policy is trying to address. So question I do have is, October 3rd question, is when would we actually adopt this policy? Sometime October, November? Probably? Okay. Then, there was a ordinance distributed earlier tonight by Mary Victor. We didn't discuss in the Finance Committee how the policy would then impact code. Would we at some point take this and revise this, or incorporate it in this? Or maybe we did address that at one point. Somehow, we wanted to reference the policy, I think, right?
I have not, I think Ms. Victor just kind of briefly showed me tonight, so I'm not exactly sure what code that you're referring to.
It's talking about the city may assume maintenance of privately maintained drainage facilities. So it somehow needs to dovetail into this policy. It's something we might want to think about, I guess.
Yes, because our policy is really for the construction and maintenance.
Yeah, so.
So it has to go someplace in code books. We knew that, but we wanted to.
We hadn't really discussed how we were going to get from here to there. Yeah, okay.
On our calendar, we show October 4th as when we bring this up for a resolution.
Okay, good.
Okay, no other questions? Thank you, Steve and Cheryl. Item number 14, contract for an interim maintenance director and maintenance strategic plan. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have our deputy city manager, Jesse Bond, and our consultant, Glenn Akramoff, here from Demarche Consulting. So they've got a very brief presentation for you. They had two versions of it, depending on the time of night. This will be the shorter version.
Thank God.
Jesse's brief.
Yeah.
So it's only 60 pages.
No, it's much shorter than that. You received a report, a copy of the Maintenance and Operations Analysis Report in your council packet. The long version kind of went through the whole thing. This just really touches on the contract and the next steps. So we've been working on this as part of 2016. We released our final report. Glenn, who's sitting to my left, prepared that along with the team at, is it Demarche? Demarche Consulting. I just kept this graphic in to show that we've had from 2003 to 2016, pretty significant infrastructure increases, and our staffing levels have not entirely kept up. One of our biggest concerns, and the reason, the component of the previous budget presentation where we talked about eliminating seasonal positions in favor of full-time positions is because of the seasonal turnover rate. So our, in 2015, the seasonal turnover rate was over 60%, which means that we're essentially bringing on a nine-month employee, training them, and then sending them off to work for someone else. And it's not working. We're, it's a very inefficient process. The good news is, the full-time turnover rate is actually very low. Our staff are staying and, for the most part, enjoying their work and doing quite well. One of the other major problems, and this is the reason Glenn is here tonight and is continuing to work with us, is our flat leadership structure. Councilmember Valderrama is correct, we have added staff to the maintenance team over the years, but we haven't added any supervisory positions. So we currently have 17 full-time staff reporting directly to the maintenance manager. That is not working, as you can imagine. So the proposal includes, and first of all, the contract that's up for consideration tonight, is bringing on an interim director of maintenance and operations. That will actually be Glenn, working for Demarche Consulting for a period of about 14 months, to help with implementation of the plan. And I didn't go through any of that, but it was in your packet. We will, I should mention, Glenn's position is not intended to become permanent. The situation is, we need some more senior-level horsepower here, too. The Public Works Director, the Parks Director, and myself are also very busy, and the maintenance team needs some support working through this transition. So we needed some horsepower. The other thing is that Glenn will be working on a long-term strategic plan, and we identified that in report. I've already talked about the two supervisor positions we're proposing, and then it's, we're also reworking a couple of the other supervisory positions. So basically, the Parks Resource Supervisor is just going to do parks, he's not going to do facilities anymore. We're converting the maintenance worker two to a lead. We've talked about the seasonal conversions, and then the class comp study we also already talked about. This is just a chart of the transition from seasonal to full-time, and we're proposing to bring on 10 full-time maintenance worker ones. In the parks, that little grid at the bottom, I just want to call out, we're retaining six four-month seasonal workers. Parks has a need for four-month seasonal workers, just due to the nature of parks. But in all other work areas, the four-month seasonal positions are being discontinued. All right, really, that's my last slide. The staff would like to encourage you to support the contract for an interim maintenance director with Demarche Consulting. We did include that in your 2017-18 biennial budget, and we're hoping that Glenn and his team can get started as soon as October 1st.
Okay, any questions for staff? Councilmember Keller?
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question. This, thank you, this was very comprehensive, obviously, the material that you presented to us. One of the things that stood out with me was the maintenance facility itself, that the size of the facility, the yard, as it was commented in, and it looked like you were going to try to increase the productivity of this particular yard with some of the adjustments that you were making, or not the yard, the office space, but the yard was not really addressed. And so are we possibly going to see, as this process goes, that we need to buy more property or expand the facility?
I won't leap to that conclusion. I do think we need to identify a facility and a yard that are located in the south end of the city. We're deploying all of our crews out of the north end of the city, and really, there's a lot of inefficiency in doing that. We do have a facility in the south end, it's Beaver Lake Shop. The yard space is very small, but the building with a remodel could be a lot more functional. We've already started reconfiguring the internal office spaces at the MOC. We had enough parts and pieces to get that work going now. But that's one thing Glenn's going to be working on while he's here, is looking at what our options are for maintenance resources in the rest of the city, not just the northeast quadrant.
You know, I would add on that a little bit. You're working on emergency management as well. I'm wondering if that facility would also come into play.
Actually, that's a great point. We did just stock the Beaver Lake Shop with emergency management supplies, so that we have supplies at the maintenance shop, City Hall, and the shop. So yeah, that's, emergency management is a component of this as well.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Hornish?
Yes, to me, this is something that we can defer to management, because they're closer to it than we are. So I would move, we authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Demarche Consulting Group and Glenn Akramoff to fill the position of interim director of maintenance and operations in an amount not to exceed $225,000.
I would second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Question's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
By your vote of 7-0, it is approved. Thank you very much.
Wonderful, thank you, council.
Okay, next, we come to Bill number 15, a discussion of construction moratorium. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just do a bit of a lead-in, and then I'll ask Jeff Thomas to then set the stage for further council discussion. Last week, on September 13th, Deputy Mayor Valderrama asked his fellow city council members to join him in directing the city manager to begin a 60-day process to do a study and encourage public input for the establishment of a moratorium across the town center, so that we can appropriately start to, start to plan what we are doing in our city, in the areas of infrastructure, of water, sewage, and traffic. You recall that we held a roundtable discussion on growth the previous week, and we were in the process of compiling comments on the options for managing growth from the participants. The concept of a moratorium was mentioned as one of the options, but it was not necessarily one of the leading options that came out of that growth roundtable. Other items suggested, including, included purchase land to reserve it, implement design standards, increase preservation of trees and reforestation of the city, build infrastructure, including both roadway and surface water infrastructure prior to or concurrent with development, the possibility of reducing zoning densities, basically downzone, and require buffers between neighborhoods and roadways. Designating town center for moratorium consideration, in my professional opinion, is not what is consistent with what is currently happening there. consistent with what is currently happening there. We have a town center plan that is supporting smart growth. We have a developer who's aggregating much of the property. The town center plan densities were designed to preserve the neighborhoods by taking approximately one-half of the growth from the, what was referred to as from King County. The design standards are in place in town center. Surface water infrastructure will be in place and regionalized per the initial plans from the developer. Roadway infrastructure will also be in place prior to people arriving. The town center plan has taken a decade and a half to come to life. It is showing great promise that matches the vision of the community. The town center plan is at a crossroads. It's moving forward within the potential that was originally envisioned. If we derail this effort, I fear that we will not recover the momentum that has started to build. Given the cyclical nature of economics, a delay could become a 20- to 30-year failed promise. I'll remind council that you've been busy with improvements to our code and control of development in Simamish, including the most recently updated comprehensive plan, your stringent tree retention standards, public work standards, and also work on the surface water comp plan and related development code, including enhancements beyond what is required by NPDES. I reached out to Ron Thiele of the Isaguas School, or Thiele of the Isaguas School District, and he said that they would be neutral to the idea of a moratorium. They have sufficient plans in place to address the current and continued growth. They have a bond issue that just passed and that will allow them to add sufficient capacity beyond, or, excuse me, including remodeling the schools and building new ones. This includes elementary schools, middle school, and a new high school. He made it clear that there is no need to enact a moratorium on their behalf. I also talked to Tracy Pierce from the Lake Washington School District, who had the same perspective. They have a long-range plan to manage the growth, and they should not be considered a reason to enact a moratorium. I reached out to Jay Kraus from the Simamish Plateau Water District. They have no sewer capacity issues or constraints for growth. They have the capacity up to 2026 to 2032, and are working with Metro for a capacity project within the timeframe of 2024 to 2028. He made it clear that Simamish Plateau Water shouldn't be the reason for a moratorium. From my perspective, I recommend that we continue to work on our planning efforts to include finding better ways to manage growth outside of a moratorium, that we continue to work with the community on solutions suggested in the roundtable discussions, and if council does desire a moratorium area for consideration, I'd suggest options other than the town center. Additionally, a 60-day discussion on having a moratorium will cause a rush to vest, overwhelming staff, and causing a flight from quality submissions. If our staff can inform your discussions, please feel free to call upon us. We also have Jay Reaganstrick here from the Simamish Plateau Water District to assist in that, if so called upon. I'd also like to ask Jeff Thomas, our community development director, to remind council of the town center implementation strategy that you approved on May 24th. So Jeff, could I turn it over to you?
Great, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening again, Council. On your screen, you will see this table, Table A, from a memo that was presented to you at your study session on May 10th of this year. And that conversation on May 10th surrounded around town center implementation strategies. So what we walked you through in an extensive presentation on that date, which we're not going to repeat here tonight, were a number of slides that basically went into a little bit of detail about each of these 14 items on the screen right now. These items, as you'll recall, were broken into short, moderate, and long-term implementation strategy items. And the short-term strategy items, we have begun working on this year as we speak, and council directed staff to be able to come back at your retreat in January and update you on our progress on the short-term strategies. Obviously, we'll be having discussion about private development initiatives in the town center as well as we move forward. And then, I believe the goal was to, in January, talk about moving forward with the next set of strategies, which here are labeled as moderate terms. So, you know, in this list of 14, I think we've got a little bit of everything. There were some staffing and consultant resourcing issues. That was items 1A and B. Obviously, the transfer of development rights and the strategy working with King County and what to do moving forward was also an item that got a lot of council conversation and attention. Regional stormwater analysis, looking at different ways, rather than our conventional, you know, site-by-site method for that. Other things on here, I think when we get into the moderate-term strategies, looking at the EIS and the zoning, along with some other development regulations, more on the planning side than the public work side were on the list, and economic analysis, land acqui, excuse me, land acquisition strategy, as well as then constructing our infrastructure, roads and stormwater pipes and other infrastructure. So this was what we presented on May 10th, and council gave the head-on for us to move forward. We've done that, and this is just a friendly reminder of that conversation, and of course, our next major milestone, we were aiming towards the council retreat, to be having this conversation again with the council. With that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor or to the city manager, whoever.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you.
I think this is a great table here and worthy of some discussion. If there's a lot of lights that light up, maybe we can do a roundtable discussion going down the row. I don't see any lights lighting up. Maybe we'll start with Kathy, come down the row.
Thank you. We heard a lot of people here tonight talk about specifically about the town center and the issues around delaying the town center. And those were mostly people who were interested in selling. So I want to give you a different point of view, because I represent the senior end of the community, people who are looking at actually wanting to downsize. And like many of our friends, we've been engaged in a very serious conversation about what we are going to do, when we're going to sell our house, and where we're going to go. My husband clearly wants to stay in Simamish, and we are seriously looking at developments in and around the town center, because one of my criteria is I want to be able to walk places where I can shop. So from my perspective, we have people who have spent 15 years trying to get their properties accumulated and ready to sell, but on the other end, there are those of us that have homes with large yards. We don't want to keep them up any longer, but we want to stay in Simamish. Right now, there isn't any place to really adequately be able to downsize. And some of the, one of the projects we're looking at, the prices range from $400,000 to $700,000, which is a nice price point also for young people coming into the community, newly married people, someone who's divorced, wants to stay in the community. There's very little on that end of the product out there in the community where people who are interested in downsizing, not only in size, but possibly in price. Very little is available, and the town center was designed to solve that problem, as well as be a place where you can find services. You don't have to get in your car to go different places. So from my perspective, I am very anxious to see the town center go forward, so we can fulfill that vision that Mr. Keller over here helped put together so many years ago.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Well, let's go down the row.
As you can see from the dark hair in the picture that you looked at, I have been involved for a little while, and in fact, I was very surprised tonight, because there were many people that gave comment tonight, that when I was on the planning commission, came in because we had a moratorium on their property so that we could do the planning that they were talking about tonight. And some of them gave incredible input as to what the town center was going to be. It was surprising to me, actually, to see that after 15 years, 18 years, they're still working on this. So that's great, it was, it was good to see them, but I really wanted to comment, as I reflected on this, because I think I made the comment, it was a surprise to me, last week when this came about. I wanted to really thank the communication committee in one respect, because the roundtable and the town, the virtual town hall that we had really generated some excellent dialogue in the city. And we came up with things in those meetings that are problems. Transportation really is one that is high on the list, I think, in those discussions. And I think the city manager, you know, identified and captured many of the other ones. And I was really looking forward to that dialogue continuing. I think that that was the plan, that that's what we wanted to do. We wanted to get the city engaged. And we, when the moratorium subject came up, that word is so energized, and as we saw tonight from the public input that we got, that I hope it doesn't derail that conversation, that we get back on track with the community and make sure we talk about those things that were identified in the roundtables. Not only would I like to see that get back on track, I'd like to implement things that can help fix and help actually make some changes. And I ask myself about the moratorium that we're talking about, how does it really change things? I mean, will traffic change if we put a six-month moratorium in place? I don't think traffic is necessarily going to change if we do that. How would it really impact? And as you saw tonight, it really does seriously impact people that are living in Simamish right now, that are looking to either retire and take advantage of their house. I remember going through the process for the town center with the moratoriums that were in place. We had a, an exception to the moratorium of an individual that their area was zoned commercial, was commercial property, and was building up as commercial, but one of the homes that was in this commercial area was still residential. And it was an elderly woman that was living in a residential home in a commercial area that was being built. And because of the moratorium, she could not sell her house. She was actually stuck in the house because of the moratorium. And so she had to come probably before some of the council members that are here, maybe one of them were, was mayor at that time. I think there had to be, an exception had to be made for that person. So the unintended consequences of a moratorium are, again, very, very dramatic. And so I think there are a lot of things that we can do, that we can put in place aside from a moratorium, that can really address the issues that have been presented. If it's the critical areas, if it's the environmental impact, if it's traffic, there are plenty of things that we can implement that would have a greater impact immediately than trying to put a blanket moratorium, in particular around this town center and even in the community wide. So those are the reservations I have. I don't think that's changed from last week, from my first impression of it. And I think we should really be looking at, and maybe actually even scheduling, some follow-up meetings with the community members as roundtables, following up with those discussion items. Moratorium came up. If moratorium is something that comes up around the roundtable, we should engage the public on that, if that's something that is still something that they want to talk about. But the way it was brought up originally was it was just the natural course. It was something that came around the roundtable, and we were going to talk about it, not necessarily implement it. And I think that we could probably, as I said, come up with some ideas that would be more effective than a moratorium.
Thank you. Councilmember Melchel.
The motion that was made last week was specific to the town center, so I'm going to keep my comments, to the most part, specific to the town center. And as I said last week, I don't believe that putting a moratorium in the town center addresses our community's concerns as a whole. And in fact, I think the town center takes pressure off the outlying areas because of the density in the town center. And it provides our community some of the services that they've been asking for, services on the plateau that they can avoid driving off, restaurants. I know over on social media, there was a bit of an outcry over what's already been listed, as far as what's coming into the town center. But again, from the communications committee aspect, and it's something I've asked for, and I'm hopeful that we will get out in front of, sooner than later, on the town center, is communicating out to our citizens what is coming. It is so much larger than what you see under construction currently, and we have some things that I think will provide those nicer restaurants that our citizens are asking for, and services like a movie theater. The things that people are asking for, I think you'll find those will come into the town center. As far as trees and traffic, because I think those are the two things that we've heard from our citizens the most, that they are concerned about. They are concerned about the trees coming down, and they are concerned about the traffic. The fact is, is the town center is highly dense, and so you actually will find fewer trees coming down outside of the town center. As far as traffic, it provides more walkability, so you would hope that fewer people would actually be in their car. So I'm hoping that that will alleviate at least some of the traffic congestion issues that we have. There are issues that we need to address as a council. I want to step outside of the town center for just a few comments, because I want to frame up for the public what is currently out there. I know I asked specifically, and Jeff, I really appreciate you putting those numbers together in a quick format, but I think it's important to understand, the council previously put in to effect the new tree ordinance in October of 2015. Currently, there are still 428 units that are vested to the old tree regulations. There are 152 dwelling units that are now under the new tree regulations. I don't believe we've actually seen what the impact of the new tree regulations will be on our community when they, when they built them. And I think it's unfortunate that the tree ordinance that we, that was passed last October came when it did, because as the old adage goes, the horse has left the barn. If that had been put in place five years ago, I think we could have made a huge impact in what the community looks like, but, so I just wanted to frame that up as far as what's still out there, because there's still quite a few dwelling units that are vested. And it's important to understand that until we start seeing some of the new applications come to fruition, we won't actually see a visual of what that looks like as far as the higher tree regulations. I'm hopeful it will help.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Valderrama.
Thank you, and I thank everybody who shared their opinions and their thoughts and experiences here. I think that this is one of the big benefits of the city of Simamish compared to Isaguas and other cities, who took decisions and then opened it up to public opinion. So I'm very grateful for that, and that you can partake as part of the discussion that's taking here. I think it's important to remember both the original discussion that I was taking place on September 13th, which is, the town center plan was developed 12 years ago. 12 years ago, less than half of our population, a quarter of the cars that are coming on. What we want to do is make sure that what we are going forward is in partnership and aligned amongst all the parties. As I said before, we're looking for balanced growth, respecting the people to be able to have their individual property rights and develop, respecting the developers, respecting the citizens that are here today, and respecting the environment and being sensitive to the trees. What we have at this moment in time, as I mentioned on last week, is staff that is overworked, staff that hasn't been able to do plans. I had pointed out the stormwater plans in particular, and the critical infrastructure, we were not able to prioritize, we don't have the basin plans. And for two years, I've been asking for questions on how are we going to mitigate the lower retention levels here on the plateau and the town center area. The town center is where half of all the new residence housing units will be taking place. It is where you're going to be having the higher traffic, guest densities and amenities, and that was the plan. The problem is that as we start to look at the The problem is that as we start to look at the traffic, as was mentioned last week by Councilmember Odell, that we're having the problems on the arteries. And by Councilmember Hornish, we have roads that when they're built out are going to fail. So what started to take place, and it was illustrated by our capital plan here, where we have six departments that are very highly workload anticipated. We're not being able with this growth to keep up with the planning and the infrastructure. To give us that ability to be able to come back and address in a proper format, how are we going to address the traffic in the most concentrated place? How are we going to address the stormwater, the drainage that will destroy our drainage, I'm sorry, the creeks and the lakes, and they've been giving us studies on that? And in addition, to look at the housing units. There has been a lot of complaints about how the growth is taking place in our city. Yes, the town center is one of those release valves. And actually, one of the things that we could look at is can we take higher density in the town center and relieve outside of the town center as part of what we're looking forward and going additionally. An issue that's not been addressed, and we've mentioned it again last week, are setbacks and buffers for the town center and for 228th. My recommendation again is that we direct the staff to open a 60-day process to study and have public input and develop recommendations and come back to us. And as part of that study, they can be looking at managing the growth, code changes that are necessary, critical, I'm sorry, the capital infrastructure plans that need to be accelerated to be able to effectively address the town center build-out today and come back to us in 60 days with those recommendations. And then based upon those recommendations, we can move forward. I think when people are sitting back and again, looking at this, what we're really trying to talk about is ensuring together amongst the three of us, and the three of us being the citizens in Sammamish, the people who want to sell, the developers, is that we continue to build the quality of life of our city and maintain the character of our city. There is concern that we are losing the character of our city. And I go back to what Lieutenant Hanley said before. When you start to talk that way, it means there's been a failure. And I believe there has been a failure to get, to have discussions that have taken place on this council, not to be able to start addressing these issues years ago, not to bring on sufficient staff to come on to see how are we going to maintain, how are we going to visualize our city? And one of them, as I mentioned, the stormwater, how are we going to address it? Part of the solution is actually the developers that we're talking about. And currently, and it's been talked about here several times, STCA is a developer who, under their guise and their plans, are currently looking at punching through new traffic to help alleviate on the east-west arterials. That's fine, we can take that into account. They're also looking at having higher ability of retaining water. That's part of the solution, but we need to be able to plan effectively to see. Because right now, there is no plan. I keep hearing business as usual, let's continue going forward. And this is not the fault of the builders, of the developers. It's something that's coming back here to the council, that we need to be able to plan and ensure that we have the infrastructure that will safeguard our environment and preserve our character. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hornish?
Yes, I too want to thank everybody for comments this evening. I did, as I listened through it, I kind of made some notes. And I kind of heard, I believe, the general comments tonight were focused on money. I don't, I don't know how else to say it. It was owners, brokers, real estate agents, and somebody said, "Bob, missing the window." So that we shouldn't stop. I think what's missing in that conversation, and what I take on as a role to sit up here, is the community good for the environment who has no voice? And in the context of this discussion that came up last week, it was in the context of the stormwater comp plan. And as much as I don't like the idea that we have rules in place, people plan, we need to move forward, I think that we need a rule of law and a rule of planning for people to be able to plan. And we have current rules in place and people have been planning for that and are going forward. The NPDS is going to be coming out in January by itself. That'll have an impact on the environment and our, and we talked about that last week as well. I don't see a need to move that up. I'd like to move it up, but I think it, in balance with the people who've been planning under the current code, I think it's too burdensome at this point to implement a moratorium at this point, to be fair. However, I do believe that we have so many things that we have fallen behind on and we need to address. So even though I am not for any moratorium anywhere, let alone the town center, because we need to move forward on that, I'm also not for a study, to even study it at this point. I think we need to let people know what rules are playing under and let them implement and plan and move forward in that regard, and we as a city need to do that. But some of the things we need to discuss was brought up, and I think this is what I've heard at the other end of the table, was at the roundtable, the infrastructure, the roads, the schools. These are things that must be addressed and we need to address it as a council. I think we can address it in time without a moratorium and without burdening staff to do a 60-day study at this point. Another question I have was a good question that was brought up by Ms. Jennifer Kim. And again, the town center was part of her analysis and the number of units and everything. So that's part of the plan and we're moving forward. I may or may not agree with it, but I think people need structure and need to have some guidance. But I would like to understand, and this is a question, I guess, for the city manager, when town center is done and we've met our goals, can we then have a moratorium for 20 years since we've met our goals?
Probably not.
I don't know. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Councilmember Odell?
Yeah, thank you. It's been interesting, both at the roundtable and also listening to public comment tonight. And then lastly, the dialogue among the council members. You know, this is a situation, well, I compared it to trying to redesign the airplane flight last time, and I still hold to that. The idea of putting a moratorium just on town center to me is nuts because that's the wrong place to do it. Town center is basically been thought out, it has some issues still to be worked out in terms of the fine details. But the town center plan basically has been in existence for longer than I've been on the council. One of the first things I did was vote to approve it, seven years ago, almost. The, there are a number of things around town that people have talked about and they've been mentioned tonight, trees coming down, traffic issues, crowded schools, et cetera. All this comes with growing communities. But we are not yet seeing the impact of some of the code changes we have made. That doesn't mean to say we can't make more. For instance, one of the things we missed was insisting on buffers along major arterials for trees. Others towns are doing this, that could be tweak we can make. But again, there'll be a time lag until we make it. We probably did the Master Builders Association to a big favor by reducing setbacks for streets and setbacks between houses. I am concerned about a number of areas around the city. We talked about one of them quite late tonight, and that is the Tamarack area, where there are major issues that are development-driven, but also are complicated by terrain issues. That's another area we need to look at. Frankly, if I were to go for a moratorium, and I might still get talked into it frankly, it would be over the entire city except for town center. And then I would gradually release pieces of the city to go ahead. R1, if it's going to be an R1, true R1, go ahead and do it. If it's, if it's going to be a multi-story thing in the town center, no problem. Even outside the town center, around the Safeway and QFC shopping centers in both the southern part of the city and Cohoney, go ahead. But we need to take this thing through. The problem is that six months isn't going to do it. Six months isn't going to tell us what we need to do, other than what we already know from sitting through a lot of these meetings. I very frankly, at this point, am not ready to go ahead with a moratorium, but I'm close. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Well, we've had a good discussion here. I think that the city manager mentioned working on concepts to bring back to council per the guidance we gave him in May. And this table up here shows how we split it into short, medium, and long-term timing. If you look at the table, I think that one thing we could do, based on the input from the community, based on the input from what's happening in the town center, STCA aggregating parcels, actually to my delight, because this was something I worried about since the beginning of the town center concept, that there were so many different parcels. I suggested maybe the city could aggregate them, and that didn't go over too well. So it's wonderful to have a developer come and do the aggregation. And along with the aggregation, he has some great ideas and great research already doing. One of them is on the stormwater, handling the stormwater. You notice that the three projects that are already underway have put in the vaults, which is a step up from those open ponds with the darn wire fences around them. And it's good to see the vaults. We had talked about looking into regional stormwater facility. The developer has an even better idea, and he's checking into the possibility of recharging the aquifer. And in that case, you basically could reach 100% retention in the town center, which I didn't think would be physically available or able. So they have some great ideas. And Kathy, you mentioned wanting to live in the town center perhaps as you, you know, many years from now when you get older.
No, not many years from now. We're actually talking.
It's why ST3 is here.
Seriously talking. And there are people who are beginning to be representing various projects, even around the town center. Which is very, very attractive to many of us.
And I agree, because I'm at that age also. And one of the things I, in conversations with STCA, the discussion about some of the townhouses, they thought about putting in, he mentioned basically brownstones, much like you can see in Brooklyn. Not, not just, well, anyway, brownstones. And I said, "Well, you know, if you're going to want the seniors in there, you might think about elevators." And his eyes, quite frankly, lit up. And he said, "There was a project down in Portland where they did town halls." And he was surprised that a lot of, instead of just the young employees at Nike and Intel, some of the 20-year employees, they sold their houses out in the suburbs and came to buy those townhouses, and he wished he had elevators in there. And so the concept would be to divide, design townhomes in the town center here with the shaft in place. And you could put the elevator in or you could use the shaft space for closets. What a great idea. So they're really ahead of the game here. And I think that with conversations between the developers and the city staff, I would expect by retreat time in January, we have some good progress. And maybe take a look at this chart and suggest to us some of the items that might be more short-term rather than moderate term. And in one of them, I see master plan changes to Lower Commons Park and the Green Spine. Well, that might have to be moved up. Update on the transfer development right regulations and policy. There's conversation about using the transfer development rights that the county has priority on. Maybe use those up and think about the policy for TDRs within the city, going from some of our sensitive areas into the town center. So I-
Or elsewhere.
Tom, yes?
Or elsewhere.
Or elsewhere, well, yes. If we can convince Seattle to take them, that would be great, too.
Maybe Covington would like them.
Right. Okay, so I am supportive of what I've heard from several here to do continued studies looking at the stormwater, the traffic. In fact, the STCA has crossed east-west connections that really would relieve some of the pressure on Southeast Fourth. And so there are great things happening. I'm just thrilled that the town center finally has gotten underway after the recession. So I'm looking forward to having staff come back to us in January, perhaps, that's my suggestion, and be, have a conversation and then have a further conversation at the retreat. So on that round, I'm looking for second round, and I see Deputy Mayor Valderrama.
No, I was actually, you were stealing some of my thunder. I was going to recommend that in January at the retreat, they bring back and identify accelerations of infrastructure as well as potential code changes that might be considered for next year during the plan as a manner of moving forward. And also, again, looking at and identifying those solution areas, whether it's for stormwater, regional stormwater retentions, or higher retention that can be done where the developers are working in partnership with us.
Good. Councilmember Keller?
Just a quick comment that, you know, one of the, I think the outcomes of the discussion, honestly, is something that, again, we've talked about in the Communications Committee. And that is, not enough people know about the town center plan. And I think the discussion tonight, actually, it's recorded. A lot of people maybe heard pieces about the town center plan that they hadn't heard before. And I want to emphasize, it's a town center plan. There was a lot of planning that went into this, a lot of community input. It was probably the most vetted project that the city ever engaged in to get public input. So this really is the town center plan. And I'm glad that we're supporting it and to hear that it's coming to visual, coming to realization.
Good. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Mr. City Manager, did you get an understanding or what do you view as a charge?
Don, can I make one more comment?
Sure. Go ahead, Tom.
You know, if there are things that are in the low-hanging fruit category that we know we may want to reconsider, is it possible to bring some of the stuff back before the council in terms of patching up exercises, like for the tree ordinance I had mentioned, and maybe for some of the other code issues before the retreat?
I think that's certainly possible. And I know it's budget season, but, Mr. City Manager?
I believe we could do that. One of the things that we're trying to do right now is to compile input from the community that we heard both from the roundtables as well as the ongoing virtual town hall. And I think it would be helpful to bring some of those back and actually talk about those things again, both with the council as well as with the community. It was mentioned tonight that a lot, there's a lot of education to be done as it relates to development in Sammamish and in Washington State. And also, there's a lot of information that we gathered from the community through this process. So I think we can have a great dialogue going forward with that. And based on your direction, we will continue to work on the town center strategies as well as looking at, for lack of a better term, the low-hanging fruit as it relates to some of the other growth from what we've heard. So we'll definitely do that.
Good. Councilmember Malchow?
Yeah, I just want to be sure that our community understands that we're not done here, that, you know, the information that we're getting still from the virtual town hall, and I think we're still rolling up the comments from the roundtable, but we will process those. The idea behind doing the roundtable and the virtual town hall was not so that it would fall into a black hole. It was so that we could- It was so that we could find places where we could do, you know, some type of actionable item from. It is not falling on deaf ears up here. I want to be sure our community understands that, that we will find things. And we do understand that the trees and the traffic are the major concerns in our community. And I think we all realize that we need to do something to facilitate the traffic. And I know during the course of the roundtable, I heard from several people, as I think several other council members did, is that taking on debt may be something that we have to look at to expedite what we're doing. So that's, you know, another piece of that conversation. Our idea with the virtual town hall was to have subsequent town halls to kind of drill down some of those ideas so that we could get feedback from our community. And I would encourage anyone who's sitting here tonight that hasn't participated in the virtual town hall, or anyone who's watching at home that hasn't participated in it, no matter how you feel about the topic of growth, is to please give us your impact, your input. We need to hear from everybody in the community. If we only have 200 and some odd people out of a city of 61,000 that are telling us how they feel, we're getting a very small sliver of how our community thinks. And so your participation and your voice are important in this.
Well said. We did get about 145 pages of comment. And now, is that up on the website?
Yes, it is. Yes, we have verbatim comments from both the virtual town hall, as well as the roundtable. The roundtable comments have actually been categorized, and we are in the process of categorizing the comments from the virtual town hall. That has to be done manually. So staff is working on that. We hope to have that done and up on the website by the end of this week.
Great. Okay, well, I think, thank you very much for following up on that and a good conversation. And we look forward to more input back from staff.
Great. Thank you, Council. We appreciate the direction.
Okay. Next comes council reports, council committee reports. Let's start, well, we'll start with Kathy. Oh, wait a minute. We have to get an extension here.
So I move that we extend for 30 minutes?
30 minutes? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Well, I think you saw the results of our finance committee meeting. I think the budget report, I was very pleased the way it was presented. I think I was very pleased with what the staff did in terms of presenting the budget. I think it was very clear. And what it, what we tried to emphasize and ask them to do was to put it in terms of our work plan and what we need to accomplish, as opposed to just looking at dollars and cents and comparing year over year, which doesn't necessarily give us the direction we need in terms of making decisions.
Right.
But I did want to talk about the fact that I have a Metro meeting tomorrow, and it's going to be about a five-hour meeting, because it starts with lunch with the Executive Director of Transportation Choices Coalition, who is going to help us perhaps communicate to Metro about the appropriateness of adding additional services to Sammamish. The question on the table tomorrow is that we are looking at Metro's long-range plan, and we're being asked for what questions we need to ask Metro to respond back to us so we can pass this plan by the end of the year. And I don't know if Cheryl, I haven't had a chance to communicate with Cheryl to see if she sends some questions forward. But Tom and Don have both been a little bit out of touch, so I have my questions that I'm going to take. But I want to put this at a higher level. We talk about transportation issues. We talk about the traffic on 228th. We talk about it in conjunction with, do we really want Central Washington to come and provide some education for us? We talk about the town center. We really need to get very serious as a city and get behind this in one way or another about how do we get additional bus service, if that's appropriate? Do we get circulator service on the city streets during our commute hours and our school hours? Do we begin to, do we approach Metro in talking about a partnership and are willing to, are we willing to pay for bus service that will help our community get from one place to another? Or are we going to demand that Metro provide that service in 2025, as opposed to trying to get it sooner? I would hope that we would be able to talk at the retreat about can Metro, or can bus service provide additional support and provide for some of the traffic issues we have in our city? And whether we look to Metro to do that, whether we look to an additional, we pay additional monies for additional bus service so we can accomplish that. We really haven't done it at a council level and gotten really, where the council is 100% behind, going, marching in one direction. And we have a really bad reputation in the community about being anti-transit, which doesn't help matters at all. So, and I think we need to separate Metro from Sound Transit, because Metro is the organization that's going to provide us service in the future, not Sound Transit. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Keller?
Just very brief, I'll try and spare the council any time. I did attend the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee, and there was-
Bob, I can't hear you.
I did attend the SEA Public Issues Committee, Sound Cities Association. One of the action items that they talked about that might come up at the next meeting, I'll have time to talk about this further, and I'll send a packet around. It's about low-income housing tax credit. This is a federal government program. And the Sound Cities Association is looking at maybe supporting this, taking a position on it. So I'll get more information out to the council members so that you can actually look at it and see if it's something that, that, or how I should actually position Sammamish in that meeting. That was, that's it for Sound Cities Association. The only other thing I can say is the Sammamish Drug-Free Coalition. We met this week. Unfortunately, we did not qualify for the grant that we were asking for to partner up with the Influence the Choice Group. That was a $75,000 grant that we had worked for this last year to try and get approved. We didn't get that, but we are actually sitting back in our next meeting. We're going to put a strategy together for this year and how we might apply for the grant again next year.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember Malchow?
Yes, thank you. I attended the Friends of Isco Salmon Hatchery event last Friday, which was kind of fun. They have 700 Chinook salmon already in their holding tanks, so there was plenty to see. Attended the Transportation Committee meeting, and I'll defer to Councilmember Odell for the report. I want to remind folks that tomorrow at 5:00 PM, there's the Surface and Stormwater Management Open House that will occur. And next week, the Storm and Surface Water Open House. Next week, I'm attending a course on local planning that's open to anyone, and I think folks in our community might be interested in attending as well. It's put on by the Washington Cities Insurance Authority, and it's a short course on local planning, which will cover the GMA and comprehensive planning basics, the legal basis of planning in Washington, open government laws, and roles and responsibilities in the planning process. So it's, again, it's open to anyone, and if anyone would like to attend, I'm happy to carpool down.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Valderrama?
Yes, I attended with the mayor, the Housing Summit, this past week, which was looking at some of the issues, both of affordable housing and being able to look at the economic groups and demographic housings. And that was very beneficial for us to look at the status and how is Seattle and the Puget Sound going to deal with the influx of new people and making sure that all of our cities have enough housing to address the needs, just of the basic housing, forget the affordable, forget the homelessness issues, which are all associated with each other. That's it.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember Hornish?
Okay, on the human services, as the chair, we had a meeting, I think it was last week, and we had a presentation by Arch as to funding and how the funding is guesstimated amongst the partners. We're still trying to get a handle on that, but it does, just for the council members to understand, it does take into account the habitat contribution that we put into it with a value that was attributed at the time. So we're trying to balance that out. The interesting thing was, the range for us was very low to much higher because of the job inputs for the city, which we don't really have as much as some of the other cities and some of the other partners. So we're still trying to get our arms around that. I think next week, or maybe it's this week, they're having a meeting where we're going to have a further discussion as to how their funding mechanism and their recommendations to the people that are participating in it is figured out, and whether or not that needs to be changed. So more to come on that.
Good. Councilmember Odell?
Yeah, a couple of things. Very briefly, on the salmon situation, I attended the RIAH meeting, Water Resources Inventory Act, which is a salmon restoration project, in layman's terms, last week. And despite the fact that we're getting good returns to the hatcheries, there is a growing concern about a couple of things. One is the fact that we're continuing to lose fry before they get out to the ocean. And part of it is a deterioration of water quality in some of the streams, which is affecting stream, uh, invertebrate life that they feed on. The second big thing, and this is something that I will encourage our council to come back to at some point, is the issue of light pollution in Lakes Sammamish and other lakes, which are drastically increasing nighttime predation. So there's not just the lights on the docks, it's the lights coming out of the windows themselves and the skyglow reflecting back onto the lake. On the Transportation Committee, we had, I think, a pretty good rundown on how things are going. Englewood Hill constructions on track, on time. ITS, we're going to be getting more money to complete ITS all the way into Redmond. Plus, Christie mentioned, I think you mentioned, the left turn on Yallow situation, that'll be coming into play as well. ITS will be getting a rejigling to take into account, in fact, schools have reopened and days are getting shorter, so light levels are changing. Southeast Fourth, now that we have a pretty good picture of what town center will probably be looking like in terms of traffic patterns, other than 228th and Fourth, we are going to go back and rerun our traffic model using some of the flow options that are showing up now, that will actually spread traffic out in different ways than we're seeing right now. So we're hopeful that'll show us that we'll be okay, more okay than we think we might be on 228th. So Holly Way, we had a major update on that from staff, gave them our feedback, and they're coming out with a couple minor revisions to things. And there'll be another open house coming up, I believe, around the first of the year. Issaquah Falls City Road, good news there. We've, staff has had good interaction with both the-
Don, can I have just a quick minute?
Yes. I didn't have my report yet, though.
I know, I was just going to, was just going to take one minute on-
Okay.
We had the, remember the Peter Donaldson and the Sustainability Group? They reported at our Kwanis Club. And the Skyline High School group is going to be focusing on traffic reduction. And so they are going to be providing us with a report of why people are driving to the schools in single occupancy cars, and their project to try to reduce that and encourage people to carpool.
Oh, great. That's good. Okay. Tom, are you done with your report? I think so.
I think it's over.
I think we lost him.
My report's pretty, pretty brief, and it's dealing with Sound Transit III. I did get the financial projections, and I distributed them to the rest of the council. Brian McCarthen, the Chief Financial Officer of Sound Transit, came out to Sammamish to meet with us and brought some staff along. I went over questions we had. Then I, then he sent me the financial projections, and I asked him for the financial projections broken down by sub-area. The, I'd like to see what this East Sub area looks like through 2060, because the total agency projections show by the end of 2060, they have built up a cash reserve of $50 billion. And since the East Sub area has very little of the bonding authority, I'm just wondering what percentage of that cash is in the East Sub area and what they propose we do with it. So I've asked for help from Sound Cities Association, so hopefully we'll get those numbers. Because we have scheduled for October 4th, potential resolution on Sound Transit III, and we hope to get someone with a pro statement and someone with a con statement, and then have a council discussion, decide whether we want to take a stance for, or against, or not take a stance. So that's on the agenda for October 4th. And that's my report. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a brief report related to Mars Hill Church and Central Washington University progress. I'm pleased to say that progress has been made in bringing higher education to Sammamish. As you'll recall, higher education was the intent expressed when purchasing the Mars Hill facility. There have been several starts and stops, when the three institutions of Bellevue College, Lake Washington Technical College, and Cascadia found themselves unable to follow through on their original letter of interest, all for a variety of reasons. We considered looking at other partners that showed interest, Digipen and Avedic University, as well as several other leasing opportunities, both shorter and longer term. Central Washington University showed interest, and council directed the council team and the city manager to continue the discussions and the potential of a relationship with them. Central Washington University showed interest, and council directed the council team and the city manager to continue that. Central Washington performed a survey of citizens, interviewed community leaders, talked to the schools, and discussed the potential with staff and council. Based on that, Central Washington University brought 24 staff from the Ellensburg campus, including the Assistant Provost, department heads, and deans, to visit the facility and meet with the Sammamish team. Based on that visit and the encouraging potential, Central Washington University staff determined that they wanted to meet with several of our legislators to gauge the educational environment in terms of legislative support, given the upcoming McCleary Legislative, the difficulties of the upcoming McCleary Legislative budget year. Provost Catherine Frank and Government Affairs Director Ann Anderson visited and discussed the potential of the site with the team. At that point, Central Washington University President Jim Godino, his wife, and the provost, Catherine Frank, came back that following week and visited prior, visited the prior Monday, not yesterday, but the Monday before, to see for themselves and to meet with the team. At this point, Central Washington University is in the process of working with us to create a proposal. There is no guarantee of the proposal or the agreement being accepted by both parties, as we don't yet know the terms. I've been told, though, however, that they have a strong commitment to the partnership. The president and Board of Trustees is planning to visit the site and would like to meet with the full council on October 20th as the first part of their monthly trustee meeting. I'll be working on providing you with more details as they're worked out. Items unknown at this time include the timing of the building being utilized, the definition of risk sharing, the business plan phasing model, the number of students and associated classes and, in particular, curriculum, and the Sammamish running star component of that mix. I've been in contact with the president, the provost, the Government Relations Director, and their CFO, and all have expressed their strong interest in this partnership. In addition, I'm to discuss the process with Ann Anderson and Linda Schachter, their Chief of Staff, tomorrow afternoon. I understand council's desire to have a backup plan. I propose that I report back to you by the 11:15 meeting, the November 15th meeting- I propose that I report back to you by the 11:15 meeting, the November 15th meeting, council meeting, with an assessment of where we are with Central Washington University. I've asked Public Works to review traffic studies related to its potential use as a facility of higher education, including trip distribution and timing impacts. Part of this plan needs to be done, done in conjunction with Central Washington University's proposal and business plan. To preserve options, I've directed the Community Development Department to propose a docket request for the 2017 comp plan update for council consideration at a later date of changing the zoning to allow a wider set of uses for the property. It is currently zoned residential and is the only property on the east side of 228th, not either part of Sammamish Highlands or Town Center in that area. This preserves council options, as there is a deadline of making this docket request by September 30th. So that is my update and proposal for the council related to Central.
Good report. Councilmember Melchior.
I wondered if you could read back the language, just, I know we got it over email, but because last week, we didn't have the language from our previous motion that was made. Do you have that?
I don't believe I have that. I'm sorry.
Motion back in.
Yes.
The, the motion from March?
Yes.
Uh, I don't believe I have, I don't believe I have that tonight. I'm sorry.
Okay. I, um, just for the purposes of the council and any public that might be watching, I believe that the context of it was that the, the council was directing the team and the city manager to engage Central Washington University, as well as look at maybe alternatives during that course of time, and then circle back. We would, I think, I think there was an amendment that was made at four months, we'd have a check-in at four months.
And it was diverted, or it was actually changed to six months, report back.
Okay.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, actually, this evening. I would move that we direct the city manager to continue to engage Central Washington University in discussions about securing a lease through their next board meeting, Sammamish visit, and update from the, from our city manager on November 15th. At that point, it should come back for discussion to the full council for potential alternative considerations for the property, if they have not formally committed to use the Mars Hill property. Further, a traffic impact analysis of impacts of Central Washington University's initial intended use of the property through their full intended use of the campus, including a full, full four-year university, would be required to formally proceed.
Second?
Okay. Let's move to second discussion. Deputy Mayor?
No, I think that it's important that we start...
I still want...
You're calling Central Washington?
We lost, um, Lyman, I put him on speakerphone.
Okay. I, I am concerned, as the city manager has gone through all of the different options that we've gone, we've had great conversations with Central Washington, we still have quite a few unanswered questions, that we thought we might have them in May, then we were supposed to have them in September, and now we're going to October, November. My concern is that we don't have a formal commitment by November, and then comes Christmas season, and we're going to lose another year off of this. So I am supportive of the motion, but I would also suggest that we begin now to start looking at the alternatives, whether it's other schools and, as well as looking at liquidation of that property to see the people who could potentially buy, so that we have options on the table and not wait till, again, we're sitting in the same situation and we're chasing another school. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Hornish.
Yeah, I just have a question. I was a little bit confused. You said it's currently zoned residential, but there's restrictions for only education and/or religious purposes, is correct?
That's correct.
So it's a zoning, okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. So we're, we're kind of stuck with that use, even though it's res, zoned residential. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. And I guess, in the motion, just to clarify, the traffic impact analysis would be done before we would enter into any type of agreement, because, and I think the code requires that, because it is a development, it's considered a development, because it's a change in use from a church to higher education, which is going to cause a lot more traffic. Even if it's not required by code, I think it'd be prudent for us to do a traffic impact analysis in the mo, that's part of the motion.
It is.
But I guess we didn't really discuss timing on that study.
No, we didn't. I, I, I left it open. It's not defined. It just says prior, it, we said, will be required to formally proceed, which I would take as before we sign a lease.
So before we do any type of agreement, we would have it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Keller?
Yeah, I, I, first off, again, want to thank the team that's been negotiating this. It's been a long, lengthy process, and it's not over. Obviously, we're getting close to, hopefully, engaging Central Washington and, and bringing higher education to Sammamish. That was our intent. So I want to thank you for what you've been doing, but just to be prudent, and for good negotiations, I think the, the motion that's on the table is reasonable. You know, we need to, at some point, we've been really discussing with Central Washington what their plans are. I'm very encouraged that they're going to give us a proposal, so it looks like this is probably going to be something that will, it will be a yes or no in a very short period of time with them. And so I think we should leave it at that. I don't know that we need to pursue other alternatives right now, however, based on the motion, I think that if it looks like this proposal isn't going to continue forward into something concrete in the next, this next go-around, that we should really come back to council and have this discussion. I just think that's good, good prudent business process. So I, I would, I would agree with that. And also, the transportation piece of it, you know, frankly, and the school wants to know as much as we do what, what the impact's going to be. We want them to be successful. We don't want them to come into our city and then find out that they have a problem. So I, I think that we should be able to put some kind of educated transportation analysis together, and I, I see that the city manager is working on that in his conversation. So I would be supportive of this. I think it's just, it's reasonable.
Good. Councilmember Huckabee?
Yes, I just wanted to get clarification on the motion. I thought I heard you say that, that November 15th, that we would have to have a formal agreement?
No, 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 no. Because Lyman's supposed to come back to us on the 15th, is what he said in his...
You turned your head, and I didn't hear a couple of words.
Oh, sorry. No, yeah, because originally, I, the thought was October, but he just gave his manager's report that said he would report back to the council on the 15th.
Right.
Whatever, Central Washington, wherever they're at. So depending on where they're at, if they've decided they're going to proceed forward, then I would suggest we do the traffic impact analysis before...
And so we don't need the formal contract or place by November 15th?
No, because I'm saying, I think we need to do that traffic impact analysis first. What, what we do with the, with the data from that would be for the council to decide, but...
I was just, I thought I heard you say that we had to have a formal agreement by November 15th.
No, no, no.
Then we would come back. So then I'm fine.
I see a bunch of lights still on. Who still wants to talk?
I didn't get a chance to talk.
Okay.
It's 11:30.
I'll keep it, I'll keep it short.
If we can do it in one minute, Ray?
I can. I wanted to thank the committee. I realize they've spent a lot of time working on this, as well as, as our city manager. I think, you know, the, the council's idea in purchasing the property was for higher education. I want to see that vision through, through Central Washington University, and if it doesn't work out, then I think it's prudent for us as council members to look at alternatives, whatever those may be.
Deputy Mayor Valderrama?
Yeah, no, I second that opinion, and I just wanted to get an understanding, when we're talking about putting it back on the docket, so it would be for 2017, to come to us to see the zoning of it, for, if we want to change the zoning?
Yes, that would be part of the 2017 work plan for first half.
Okay, but since it's currently zoned educational and religious, at this point in time, there would be no need for that, but it's, if something changes during the time? All right. Thank you.
Basically, it's a placeholder for a council for future consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hornish?
Yeah, just to clarify the motion, if there's no real, I guess we have to make a subjective call whether or not Central Washington has a, has shown commitment that they're going to move forward.
Yes.
But I mean, to move forward, not to say, well, we're still thinking about it.
Right.
If there's, if they come back on November 15th and say, well, we're still interested, but we don't know, that's not sufficient. I want to make that clear. All right. The only other thing is, I think, as we get into this traffic impact analysis, does anybody know the number of running start students that we have in Sammamish?
That will be part of the analysis.
Does anybody know? I don't even know how we made the decision to bring it on and would, would save people going off plateau, if we don't know that number.
Yeah, I think Central...
Three hundred, three to 400.
There you go.
I think that's probably a clo, good number. I checked. It may not even be that high. But that's actually more people that'll be coming to 228th, by the way, to go to school.
Okay. Yeah. No other questions, so call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Was that a aye from Tom?
Too late. Give me a adjourn, and you can vote on that.
Go ahead, Tom.
We're pretty far along with, uh, Central on this whole issue. I would hope the council would have patience enough to let it play out in the next, um, couple of months.
Nope.
We're breaking away from having them over. I don't know if this next meeting will be conclusive, but I don't think they're dragging their whole Board of Trustees over to Sammamish just to do an entire kick. I think we're probably getting down to the point of making a decision here. So I would hope that the council would not take any action that indicates that we'll waver.
Okay, I think you missed, the, the motion actually is to hold off for two months, November 15th.
Okay.
That's a drop dead.
Unfortunately, my, the whole system disconnected just as we started in on this, and I honestly missed about half the motion.
Yeah, well, thank you for participating in the whole meeting, and it's time for you to go to bed.
I don't care.
Okay. So I think we voted on it, and is there anything else, any other business?
I move. Will you adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.